Will the meeting please come to order? This is the City Council Adjourned Regular Meeting of April 22, 2025. The time is 5:15. Mr. City Clerk, would you just take a moment to tell people, both here and if they're watching at home, how they can participate in tonight's meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of our audience who wish to speak may submit their name into one of the speaker kiosks next to the city clerk or in the main lobby. We also offer the ability to provide live comments via Zoom and submit written comments through our e-comment system. For those who wish to participate virtually, visit zoom.us using any web browser or the Zoom app on smartphones or tablets and enter meeting ID 848-4853-1263. The passcode is 272906. You may also dial in by calling 669-900-6833 or 346-248-7799 and entering the same meeting ID and passcode. Those who wish to provide comments via Zoom are asked to enter the speaker queue by raising their hand electronically. The city clerk will call your name and allow you to unmute your microphone at the appropriate time. Those dialing in by telephone will be identified by the last three digits of their telephone number. We ask that you please state your name for the record. The time limits per speaker are noted in the posted agenda and are established based on the number of requests submitted. All requests submitted after the first speaker is called shall receive 90 seconds. Those who wish to provide written comments may do so by clicking e-comment on the City Council Meeting Agenda webpage at cityofirvine.org/ictv. All comments will be provided to the City Council as part of the meeting record and will be uploaded to the city's website. For technical assistance with Zoom before or during the meeting, please call 949-724-6078. For any other questions or assistance, please contact the city clerk's office at 949-724-6205 or via email at clerk@cityofirvine.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk Carl Peterson. If you would, Carl, at this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Goh.
Here.
Councilmember Lou.
Here.
Councilmember Treseder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mye.
Here.
And Mayor Agren.
At this time, I'd like to turn to Vice Mayor and Councilmember James Mye to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask those who are able, please stand for the pledge. Remain standing after the pledge, if you would.
Ready, begin.
My pledge allegiance to the flag and the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to call forward Rabbi Richard Steinberg for the invocation this evening. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, thank you for making the time to honor the honorable, whom we recognize tonight as people who not only survived the horrors of history but thrived and made their own history. I'm deeply humbled to offer the invocation in front of these heroes, people who made an impact even though their very existence was begrudge them. We do right as a community, and I applaud our council here in Irvine when we take time to acknowledge the righteousness of those who touch lives, those who stand up against evil and speak peace to pain and transform misery into meaning. That spirit, we pray, Eternal One, bless us this night as we devote time to acts of remembrance and heroism. The amazing models of humanity that we honor tonight teach us all important lessons. We pray this night that those lessons will resonate with everyone. The lesson of remembering the past is critical to ensuring the future. Understanding how the Holocaust came to be will inform us to safeguard that it will never happen again. Teaching accurate history in our schools, having strong protections for minorities, and being determined to never let hate speech cloaked in free speech ideas turn into violence. Our survivors know too well how quickly hate speech can become aggression, intimidation, and then physical. These lessons are clear, and we must remember to secure our future. The lesson of heroism reverberates in our very souls this night. Courage means standing up even though you are afraid. Our survivors are the definition of courageous. To stand up for what is right and good is never wrong, even if there are negative consequences. Our survivors here learned this lesson time and time again. The Eternal One admonishes us to learn it too. History has a keen way of judging who was right and who was wrong. I pray that we in this generation continue to stand up for right and peace, for justice and fairness for all. A final prayer for our hearts this night, I pray that we human beings will remember that we are all responsible, one for the other. The 20th century great Rabbi Abraham Joshua Heschel taught, "Some are guilty, all are responsible. Some are guilty, all are responsible." We must help each other to be our best selves as individuals and as a community. Civic leaders, grassroots leaders, the electorate, every single human being is reminded tonight by our heroes that we must hold each other tightly, not to tear each other down, but to lift each other up. Tonight, we honor people whose very story will demonstrate a sense of pride in being Jewish, that though we don't rest on that pride, we use it to help all of humanity to celebrate freedom and peace and love. A special blessing for our law enforcement officers who we also honor tonight, you two are examples of helping humanity be its best self. May we all be blessed this night as we remember the sadness and elevate the heroism, and let us say, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Rabbi Steinberg. Tonight, we have two presentations, Items 1.1 and 1.2 on our council agenda. Item 1.1 is regarding Yom HaShoah Holocaust Remembrance Day, and that will be our first presentation. For this item, first, I'd like to say those who wish to participate via Zoom may now raise their hand electronically to enter the speaker queue. And at this time, by prior agreement and arrangement, I'm pleased to turn to Councilmember Melinda Lou, who requested that this item be agendized this evening.
Good evening. It is my honor to introduce this proclamation and the presentation. I see my role as an elected official to be one to connect residents, uplift the vulnerable, and provide a platform for understanding and education. Thank you to the Jewish community for educating me and trusting our office to assist in this matter, and I also want to take this opportunity to thank all of my council colleagues for their cooperation and support. And without further ado, it is my honor to introduce Mr. Jerry Shapiro from the Jewish
Thank you, Councilmember. My name is Jerry Isaac Shapiro. I'm privileged to be the senior director of the Rose Project, part of the Jewish Federation of Orange County. To you, Councilmember Lou, and to your fellow councilmember Mike Carroll, and really to everyone on council, thank you for both championing the idea of this commemoration from the very beginning. I'll note that this day is recognized formally in Israel and throughout the Jewish world, not merely as Yom HaShoah, the Day of Remembrance of the Holocaust, but rather as Yom HaShoah Vihagivua, the Day of Remembrance of the Holocaust and Heroism. We explicitly add the term "heroism" to remember that there were Jews who courageously stood up against the Nazis and their collaborators, against insurmountable odds. They did not walk meatly to their deaths. And we also include heroism to bless the memory of those righteous Gentiles who stood by and stood with our sisters and brothers at grave risk to themselves and their families. Now, in Israel, on the evening before Yom HaShoah Vihagivua, on the evening before the day, a siren is sounded throughout the entire country, within office buildings, on the street, in schools, no matter where you are, you hear two minutes of a piercing siren, and everything, and everyone stops. Cars pull over to the side of the road, conversations pause, everyone stands just where they are. It's a unique national moment of individual and collective reflection. We won't be sounding that siren here, but I'm asking everyone to maintain a moment of silence to reflect on the meaning and the lessons we can all derive from this particular moment in history. Eight decades after the Holocaust, after the Shoah, there were approximately 221,000 survivors worldwide. In the U.S., we estimate that there are approximately 80,000, and here in Orange County, they number in the hundreds. Today, we will hear some of their stories. Everyone's story is connected, and everyone's story is obviously unique. Please welcome Zorika to tell a part of his story.
Thank you. I'm not a speaker. I'm not a professor. I'm a child who survived the Holocaust. This is my wonderful granddaughter, and this is my wonderful daughter. And we are here because people cared. I'm going to give you a bit of my history and my story. I stand before you today to remember and speak for those whose voices were snuffed with fire. I'm here to share my life as a child survivor of the Holocaust who lost 60 members of her family. Eight survived. I can cry and mourn. I daily feel the lack of family. I do not, I do feel the pain of growing up without a father, grandparents, without brothers or sisters, cousins, aunts, nephews, relations. By the time I was five, I lived in three orphanages. All the children there were survivors of a massacre, some from Europe, some from Iraq, some from Iran, some from Morocco, Yemen, Syria, and many from Yugoslavia, all of us trying to find family. Today's Yom HaShoah, a day of remembrance. Today has a special urgency for me. I am 80 years old. Blessed to live in America, in a land that I love, whose values I deeply share, yet again, I hear the voices of hate and prejudice. I hear the calls for the destruction of my people. I hear anti-Semitic trope. I hear propaganda. I experienced the blame, directed the Jews everywhere. I cry with pain for all the mothers, the daughters, who lost all the people that they loved. They too are scared. Where is this leading? Who is leading this hate? I can tell you about the Nazis. The Nazis and their allies and the collaborated murdered millions of people. Six million of them were Jews. They murdered babies, women, children, pregnant women, old people, young men, all of them were Jewish, and they could not escape. Before the war, there were nine million Jews in Europe. After the Holocaust, there were three. Two-thirds of the Jewish bodies, Amisrael, were cut off, murdered, destroyed. Could you survive with just a third of your body? Yes. They were my family, my grandparents, my grandmother Rachel Cohen, and my grandfather Theodore Fisher. There were my uncle Fritz and his wife, who was pregert nine months with a baby in her womb and had a beautiful girl by her side. There were my uncle Leo and his wife and three boys. It was my biological father, Svetosar, and his family. He fought with the partisans, as did his best friend, Uncle Fritz. In Yugoslavia alone, I'm from Yugoslavia, I'm from Bosnia Sarajevo, the Axis partners and their collaborators murdered 53,000 Jews. In 1941, there were 67,000 Jews who lived in Yugoslavia. They were part of a very old Sephardic community, like my grandmother Rachel. She still spoke Ladino in the house with an accent from Barcelona. Many people don't know about that community. My grandpa was an Ashkenazi from Vienna. Oh, I'm sorry. Like my grandfather Theodore and his family, who came from Vienna, they prayed regularly at an Ashkenazi synagogue, and that were my grandparents who were married. That synagogue was desecrated by the Nazis and used as a brothel. So why am I telling you about the synagogue? That synagogue was rescued after the war. It was refurbished by a few surviving Jews. Again, it became a home for Jews and others who survived the Holocaust. Later, it sheltered Muslims. When there was a war between the Serbs and the Muslim, we all know about the terrible war in Sarajevo, that synagogue became the only place that all of them could go and get medications and food. Nobody asked what religion you were. So Serbs and doctors and Muslims all treated the whole community without asking anybody. In 1945, 14,000 broken remnants of the Jewish Yugoslav community were still alive. They survived by hiding. Friends hidden them. My mother was hidden in a pigsty. A Serb family dug a hole, they were in a farm in the mountains in Sarajevo, they dug a hole, and she spent three years underground in a pigsty. Now imagine that, she was 20 years old. Others fought with the partisans. There were 5,000 Jews who fought with the partisans. 1,300 of them were killed. So in my memories, there are so many tears and so much gratitude. Now gratitude to whom? A gratitude to those angels. My mother called them angels. Who are those angels? They were the average person, the Christians. So in her case, my aunt, was my cousin actually, was captured and taken to Italy. She had a little four-year-old girl, and they were supposed to be transported to Buchenwald, to Auschwitz, and they were waiting, and they were starving. And there was an Italian fascist soldier who felt sorry for the little girl, and every day he would throw something over the fence, sometimes a slice of bread, sometimes a cookie, sometimes an apple, and he called it for the bambina. And that's how they survived. They were rescued by the partisans and then by the Americans. And then who was the other angel? The other angel was this family, Serb family in the mountains of Yugoslavia, who happened to have been, gone to school, he was a lawyer, like my uncle, they had gone to law school together, and he decided that he was going to save my mom. She was the youngest of the family, and they risked their own lives. And with her came a best friend. Rikicza was Muslim. So the two, the Jew and the Muslim, went to the Serb to be hidden in a pigsty, and that's how they survived. And after the war, Rikicza, my mother, went up to them and said, "Did you know that we were Jewish? Did you know I was Muslim?" She said, "Of course I did." And so they said, "So why did you do it? You endangered your family." And he said, "Because I am a good Christian. Christians don't massacre people." So that was another angel. There was another, a third angel, and that's the last one I'll tell you about, because I know other people have something to say also. He was a Muslim guard. My mother was captured in 1941, right when the Germans came, and she was thrown in prison. And when she was in prison, there was a fire. That was the prison that was sending them to Auschwitz. She wasn't wearing her yellow star, and that's where she was imprisoned. So there was a fire, and in the rush of the fire and the explosions and all that, this guard, Muslim guard, says to my mother and her friend, he says, "Get out of here. I don't know who you are. If I see your face again, I'll shoot you, but get out of here." And that's how they survived. So you can cry, you can laugh, you can do what my parents did. Every Friday night, I came home, I was a little girl. My stepdad has lost his wife and seven children. I came home, every Friday, there were candles, memorial candles, we called them zikaron candle, they said the yischor, which is the prayer for the dead, because there were 60 people that were dead, and it takes a long time to remember all 60 of them. They lit the candles. My grandfather, my stepfather, would look at me with his beautiful eyes, tears in his eyes, and he would say to me, "Come here, my shanei medaleh. Come here, my pretty girl." And he would put his arms around me, and he would bless me. He would bless me. He would say the prayers for the dead, and then he would bless me. And after the blessings, they would light the Shabbat candles. I love you, huh? They would light the Shabbat candles. And then they would start to sing, and there was joy in the family, and there was a blessed, thank you so much, thank you. And there was gratitude to the angels. He blessed, they blessed these people for, I'm 80 years old, but they're dead now. For 50 years, they blessed them. They blessed them by name, they remembered them, they carried them in their hearts. So what do I ask of you? Why am I here? I'm here to ask of you, to ask of me, to ask of all of us, to have courage, to have courage to stand up to hate, to speak up, to be counted on the side of the angels, to save all of us from evil, from prejudice, from hate, and to just let America be this wonderful country that it's always been. Thank you so much for listening. Thank you.
For decades, nearly every member of the American Armed Forces who participated in the liberation of the camps, they remained silent. They could barely put into words the horror they witnessed, and they didn't do what they did for appreciation or for glory. Yet hearing their stories is also essential, because they too will soon not be able to tell us what they experienced. Today, we have Shelley Meyer, who is representing her grandfather and those of his generation who participated in the liberation of the camps.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. My grandfather, Stephen Fages, was a part of the Army's 104th Infantry Division, I can never say that correctly, the Army 104th Infantry Division, also known as the Timberwolves Division, that was activated in 1942. My grandfather was 37 when he landed in France in 1944. After capturing several cities along the way, they advanced into Nordhausen and Metalbound, Dora, concentration camps in 1945 of April. They saw things in the concentration camps they never expected to see, even after the horrors of their own battles through against Germany. My grandfather never spoke of any of this to any of the family members about what he saw. Like so many of the greatest generation, he kept it to himself. I only learned about what my grandfather's experiences were when I acquired his bookcase and all of its contents. He passed away in 1990. My grandfather never thought of himself as a hero. He would have never said that about himself. He was doing what he was trained to do. I want people to know what my grandfather and fellow soldiers saw. Other generations need to know exactly what they saw. He would have been devastated to hear that there are so many people that deny the very horrors that he witnessed firsthand. For those like my grandfather, for the victims, for the survivors, the survivors here today, we cannot allow this memory to be, of this truth, to be ever erased.
Thank you, Shelley. I'd like to introduce Rabbi Ruben Minz of the Chabad Center for Jewish Life and the Orange County Holocaust Education Center.
I want to begin by thanking the entire City Council, as well as Wendy Baccot, and all those who helped organize this deeply meaningful Yom HaShoah commemoration. Your leadership and commitment to remembrance, tolerance, education is both appreciated and essential. Yom HaShoah, Holocaust Remembrance Days, not just a date on the calendar, it is a moral obligation. We gather today to remember the 6 million Jews and millions of others who were murdered and to honor the survivors who rebuilt their lives with unimaginable strength and grace. We are especially privileged to have several survivors with us here today, who we've heard from, including Dr. Jacob Eisenbach, who survived Auschwitz and who will be turning 102 this week on April 27. But remembrance alone is not enough. We must educate, we must act. Today, I'm honored to share the extraordinary story of a survivor who dedicated his life who dedicated his life to that mission. Mel Mermelstein, a pioneer of Holocaust education in Orange County, who passed away just two years ago. Mel survived Auschwitz and later was liberated from Buchenwald at the age of 17. At that time, he weighed just 67 pounds and was suffering from typhus. Despite the horrors he endured, Mel chose not silence, but truth. He preserved every document, every artifact he could. Beginning in 1967, he made over 50 trips to the concentration camps, bringing back with him evidence and turning the remnants of atrocity into powerful pieces of art and education. And then he did something truly extraordinary. He single-handedly took on local Holocaust deniers, the Institute for Historical Review, based here in Huntington Beach. He dragged them into the courts in 1979, and he prevailed in 1981 with an incredible ruling for the first time established that the Holocaust by a court in the United States was a historical fact, simply not subject to dispute. Today, Mel's memory lives on through the Orange County Holocaust Education Center and Museum, which was built around his personal collection. It is more than a museum. It is a sanctuary of truth, a voice against hate, and a living classroom for the next generation. Each month, thousands of visitors, especially students, walk through our doors. They come face to face with history, not through textbooks, but through real artifacts, survivor testimonies, and immersive exhibits. And what we're witnessing is truly remarkable. A decline in hate speech and bullying in schools and a visible rise in empathy, inclusion, and moral courage. Students leave not just informed, but transformed. This is how we defeat hatred, not only by remembering the past, but by shaping a better and brighter future. To everyone here today and for all the efforts here, thank you for standing up for truth. Thank you for standing up here tonight. Thank you for recognizing that this work matters now more than ever. Together, we are ensuring that the memory leads to action and that "never again" is not just a slogan, but a promise. Thank you.
As has been noted, there are many other survivors here. Not everyone is going to be able to speak, but I did want to note them. Please forgive me if a name is mispronounced or if you're not on the list. That mistake is mine alone. Dr. Eisenbach, as was noted. Jeanne Moroz from the Ukraine. Yeta Kaderita Shakmurova from Uzbekistan. Judith Simon from Budapest, Hungary. Judith was a hidden child. Michael Simber from Odessa in the Ukraine, hid in Uzbekistan until after the war. Erica Susan from Austria. Mark Berman from Odessa. Larissa Baum, also from Odessa, evacuated with her family to Kirgizkan. Moise Shmurak from the Ukraine. Larissa and Moise had married. And Ludmilla Zanina from Moscow. I mention those names because too often we characterize the Shoah, the Holocaust, as solely in Europe or solely in Central or Eastern Europe. It was nearly a worldwide phenomenon. And as has been noted, 2/3 of European Jewry were decimated and millions of others, in addition to Jews, were killed as well. I'd like to introduce Julie Marzuk for closing remarks. Julie is an attorney, associate law professor, and a trustee on our Board of Jewish Federation of Orange County.
My name is Julie Marzuk, and I am honored to be here today as an Irvine resident and, as Jerry said, a board member of the Jewish Federation of Orange County. I want to thank Rabbi Steinberg and Rabbi Minz and Rabbi Seener, the survivors and liberators, who all spoke so beautifully today. The Jewish community of Irvine spans the political and religious spectrum. That diversity is represented here today, not just with our speakers, but with the many community members that are here in attendance. Thank you to everyone who is here today. It is amazing to see everyone. The Jews of Irvine are not a monolith, but we are firmly aligned in our shared commitment to teach the Holocaust and its lessons of intolerance so that the atrocities of the Shoah are never repeated. The Jews just finished observing Passover, where we are commanded to remember our own personal liberation from bondage. We honor the victims of the Holocaust because the Shoah is not just something that happened to others in history. The persecution of the Jews is a living and ongoing threat. This past week, during Passover, the governor of Pennsylvania's home was firebombed as he and his family slept. He was attacked specifically and solely because he is a Jew. Also this week, at Northwestern University, the campus was graffitied with the words, "Globalize the Intifada," spray painted across it. Chance to globalize the Intifada are calls to inflict worldwide violence against Jews. The Jewish community of Irvine stands here today, united, to say unequivocally that we will not ignore the face of modern-day antisemitism. In Irvine, we celebrate our religious freedom and diversity. I am grateful to the city council for the opportunity given here today to educate our larger Orange County community. Thank you to the council members, all of you, who embraced the sacred duty of remembrance. To our civic leaders, I ask that you continue to speak clearly against Jew hatred. Act firmly and lead boldly. Silence is not neutrality. It is complicity. Never again is now.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening and sharing your thoughts in heartfelt words. And Mayor Agren, if I may, with your indulgence, I'd like to turn to the city clerk for any public comment.
Yes, of course.
And city clerk, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
Thank you, Councilmember Lou. We have six requests to speak, three in person and three on Zoom. If I could call forward Sandy L., Jason Gershfield, and Amir Kahana. And we'll start with Sandy. And each speaker will get three minutes.
Thank you, good evening. First of all, I want to give the council a sincere thank you for honoring and remembering our cherished Holocaust survivors tonight. Never forget is an important call to action, requiring us to find strength in reminding the world of the atrocities of history and to do anything in our power to prevent them from happening again. We must keep teaching the stories and experiences to generations to come. You have done a mitzvah tonight, a good deed, and we thank you. As you know, there are those that deny the Holocaust happened. Further, there is also an insidious attempt to minimize the horrors of the Holocaust by casually using comparisons to modern-day issues. Comparisons like these dilute the most industrialized genocide in human history while minimizing their suffering. They also weaponize Jewish history while ignoring our reality. It strips the Holocaust of its unique horror and turns it into a talking point. The Holocaust wasn't just bad policy. It was a systematic, state-sponsored plan to annihilate an entire people. So while events in current history have their own insidiousness, there are plenty of words in the English history and language, in the English language, to describe these events. There's no need to appropriate the word Holocaust. This is called Holocaust inversion, and it's a form of antisemitism. So I urge everyone to stop using Jewish trauma to make a point. Thank you.
Jason Gershfield?
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Lou for bringing this forward. I'd like to thank all of you for voting on it. And I'm deeply grateful to all of the speakers before me. It was my honor to hear from all of you. So I do think the 80th anniversary is particularly important, perhaps more so in certain ways even than the century because 80 years is approximately the length of human lifespan. And so at the 80-year point, that's when living memory starts to recede into history. And there's a whole book about this, which I've always loved, which is the book The Fourth Turning by William Strauss and Neil Howe. And they divide history into an 80-year seculum. That's Latin for century. So the, once the generation that lived through the last crisis dies off, we're forced to relearn their lessons. And one can look at the world right now and make up one's own mind as to whether that is happening. So however, while I fully support this proclamation, while I'm grateful for it, I would like to note the irony in the proclamation reading, quote, "Here in Irvine, we are committed to fostering a culture of unity, respect, and understanding," when that has not been the case in many parts of Irvine of late, including in these council chambers. And when I see posters of kidnapped and murdered hostages ripped down across this city. So here's one that I took a couple of weeks ago. This was at Culver &amp; Michelson. That's a big spot for posting things. And this is of two-year-old Kaffir Bebas, excuse me, nine-month-old Kaffir, who was kidnapped and strangled to death and whose corpse was paraded around as a trophy of war by a group which has been praised in these chambers. Some of these posters, as I've noted before, are next to posters of missing dogs and cats, which have been left up. So this proclamation will not change the fact that 80 years after the Holocaust, to some people in Irvine, a Jew is still worth less than a dog. And I would like to respectfully ask the city attorney or the police if they could maybe look into some of the tearing down of posters because those are private property. And if they were the campaign signs of anyone on the council, I have no doubt that that council member in particular would be quite angry about that. So I would say that a murdered baby deserves the same protection. Again, thank you all for bringing this forward. It's been incredible listening to the speakers before me. And yeah, thank you.
Amir Kahana?
My name is Amir Kahana, and I am the board chair of the Jewish Federation of Orange County. I mostly want to express my sincere gratitude to the council, to the police, to the Jewish community that is here today, for everyone that made today possible. I want to tell a little bit about my background. My mom was born in a displaced persons camp after the war near Munich. Her mom, my grandmother, had a family before the war, a husband, children. After the war, it was just her and her little brother. You know, the Holocaust is something that has affected me my whole life and something that in many ways, you know, you say "never again," but you really think it's behind us. Which brings me to what I saw last year here in these council chambers, which was scarring for someone who's lived in this city for 24 years and plans to spend the rest of his life in this city. I love Irvine. And scary. And it's still scary, thankfully not here, but it's scary in the world around us when we see antisemitism just really everywhere in ways that we haven't seen before, at least I haven't. So that is why I'm so grateful for today because this is, this is a dream for me compared to what I saw a year ago. And I just want to thank everyone in these chambers that made it possible. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Nishanian. Mr. Nishanian, you may unmute your mic.
Yes, good afternoon from Japan. I went to Dachau in 1985 with my Jewish stepfather, who's buried here in Orange County. I've seen the horrors of the Holocaust there, true. But it's a shame that the Holocaust is being used here for political purposes. April is also Arab Heritage Month. There are Arab residents here in Irvine. It has not been recognized formally. It's also Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day tomorrow, which is not being recognized formally, although there's a little presentation done in chambers in front of nobody. That's tomorrow. What used to happen here is that the city would recognize Turkish Children's Day on April 23 formally and then recognize Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day on the 24th formally. Don Wagner, Mayor Don Wagner, withdrew the Children's Day recognition proclamation and said that the community needs to have a discussion. That did not occur. Those games occurred again with the Turkish Children's Day with Mayor Khan. You're using the "never again" stuff to rewrite history, rewrite Jewish history, rewrite Israeli history. In 2020 through 2024, Israel collaborated with Turkey and Azerbaijan to cleanse ethnic Armenians and also have them kidnapped and put under false trials. There are Armenians in Azerbaijan that have been kidnapped and are being put to trial. They were cleansed from Artsakh, their ethnic home, for the last 1,500 years. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that Rabbi Steinberg is an operative of the Anti-Defamation League. The Anti-Defamation League has the history of spying on US citizens, defaming US citizens, and participating in the denial of the Armenian genocide for Israel and Turkey. "Never again" should apply to everybody, not just Jews, but to Palestinians and Armenians. And you guys are putting yourself before everybody else. The Jewish community here is no more important than the Arab community, the Armenian community, or any other community in Irvine, California, the United States, or the world. You all should be ashamed of yourself for forgetting that. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to respond, please.
Do we have further speakers?
We do. We have three more speakers.
Let me, let's hear from them, and then you'll have an opportunity.
I think by law, I'm allowed to respond now.
Well, you may be allowed to respond, but we want to hear the rest of the speakers first, then you and others at the dais. Excuse me, excuse me.
Point of order. I move that I be allowed to respond.
What is your point of order?
I move that I be allowed to respond right now.
Very well. The ruling of the chair has been subject now to a motion to hear from council member, Councilmember Treseder, right now. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I heard a second.
Is there a second? There'd be no sec- Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Let me just say as chair, one of the things I've tried to bring to this council chamber is stability, order, respect. We don't, when we sit up here and listen to people, say things that we don't like, that we may abhor. We don't respond to it typically. Council members do have the opportunity to- Councilmembers do have the opportunity to offer some comments. I just think as a matter of order that we should hear from the rest of the public, three speakers, as I understand it, who wish still to be heard. And then council members, of course, will have an opportunity to make brief comments after that. So I would urge a no vote on the motion appealing the ruling of the chair. Please call the rule.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yeah, I'm not voting on anything right now. I'm going to make a point of order. The Brown Act, the city attorney needs to tell us what the Brown Act says, so the mayor doesn't have to go through this motion and vote stuff. So, city attorney, tell us what the Brown Act says. We had a public comment, so step up and tell the city council what the Brown Act says. So we don't have to get into, I'm not voting anything. I'm not voting yes, I'm not voting no. I'm voting no, present. I'm not making a spectacle of this. Tell us what the Brown Act says.
Councilmember Carroll. The Brown Act says that council members are allowed to offer brief responses to comments made during public comments. It does not specify when those brief responses are to be offered. The mayor ruled that the brief response would be provided at the end of public comments. Councilmember Tredseeder appealed that ruling to the whole council and got a second on the vote. The item, that parliamentary question about when to hear the brief response to the public comment is properly before the council.
So Jeff, you're now, your point is that when the Brown Act response happens is now open for debate, and you permit this thing to happen?
That's exactly the issue. It's before the council.
Even though, Jeff, even though, city attorney, every single meeting we've had, if Councilmember Tredseeder wants to respond, or if I want to respond, they respond. And let you, yet you let the mayor just run this whole motion thing. I'm not voting for the mayor, I'm not voting against the mayor, I'm not voting. So call whatever you want, but it's up to you, it's up to you to respectfully interrupt and say, you know what, she gets a chance to respond. And now you have to put us in a position where I got to vote. This makes no sense whatsoever. This is a travesty.
If I may offer my opinion, I know it's unsolicited, but we have prepared for this presentation and invited the community to come and offer their testimony for the purpose of education and understanding, and also to offer healing. So a lot of them are of older age, and I would rather that they have the opportunity to finish the presentation before we have an opportunity to speak. I believe all of us on council will have the opportunity to speak, and I would love to respond to that last comment as much as Councilmember Tredseeder, but for the sake of our guests here, would you be willing to wait?
I'm happy to wait till the speakers are done, but I don't know how that would change the, the other speakers or the timing or anything like that. Whether I speak now or after the speakers, it's going to add to the time.
I would rather have this done so the, um, the guests here will be able to maybe-
May I ask Councilmember Lou, are you withdrawing your second?
Yeah.
Are you withdrawing your second?
I'll withdraw my second.
Is it, Councilmember Lou has withdrawn her second. The motion then will not be voted upon. We'll continue to hear from the, how many speakers do we have left?
Three.
We will continue to hear from those three. If any others call in, they're not to be added to the list. We'll hear from those three, and then council members will have an opportunity to speak. And then we'll take a vote on the proclamation as well. With that, would you call on the next speaker, please?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan M. Susan, you may unmute your mic. You have 90 seconds. Hello, Susan, can you hear us? There's no response. Our next speaker is Cheryl Katz. Cheryl, you may unmute your mic.
Yes, thank you so very much. I am sitting here with my mom, a 97-year-old Holocaust survivor. Her name is Peiri Katz, and my mom asked me to speak on her behalf, but I will say that before I do and, and key up the video that is there, it's a short one-minute video, in light of what was just stated, I just have to quickly say that today, 80 years after the liberation of Auschwitz throughout the world, in the UN, and funded NGOs, antisemitism is rampant. There are also Holocaust reversionists who denigrate the memories of those who were murdered by the Nazis, defame the memories of those who fought in World War II against that evil ideology, and demean Holocaust survivors, like my mom and other survivors, by false comparisons, mislabeling the most pro-Israel friend of the Jewish people and those support him as Nazis, because the Nazis today are the Iranian regime, its neck, its proxies, and all of those antisemites who spread their hate and propaganda on our internet, on our campuses, in our communities, and who on October 7th murdered, raped, burned, and kidnapped innocent Israelis, including Americans, and whose charter states that their sole purpose is to kill Jews and destroy Israel along with Western civilization. It is because 80 years later and in every generation, there are those ruled by ID, evil ideologies, who seek another Holocaust, that tonight is so important. So I'd like to read what mom said. "There are no words in the English language to express my profound gratitude to the city council and to all those in the audience whose fathers and grandfathers, along with the allied forces, fought to save my lives. It's hard to believe that it's been 75, 80 years since I was liberated by the Americans on a train just leaving the death camp of Dachau. Hitler knew that he was losing the war, and we knew that he was trying to kill as many of us as possible. We were being taken to an unknown location where we would all be unloaded and shot by the Nazis with machine guns. Suddenly, we heard shooting, and the train came to an abrupt stop. When the cattle car doors opened in the faint light, I could see the brave faces of the American soldiers. I heard some of the older people yelling, 'Americans, Americans,' as we came off the train half-alive. We all fell to our knees and began kissing the feet of the American soldiers. They were all so brave, and I learned my first American phrase, 'Let's go, let's go,' as we were being ushered into an area where we were given chocolates and powdered milk packets. Sadly, many of the survivors' stomachs blew up from eating too much too fast, and they died right there. For the rest of us, the soldiers took us back to Dachau, where that death camp became a displaced persons camp. I waited five years in displaced persons camps while my aunt and uncle, sister and brother continued to send papers and affidavits of support stating that I would not take a job from any American, that I would have a place to stay upon my arrival in the US, and that the US government would not have to support me. I came to Ellis Island in 1950, where I legally immigrated to the USA. It was the happiest day of my life. I came to this country not to fly Czechoslovakian flags nor hang pictures of former Czech President Moserik, but rather to become a part of the American fabric. I was and am a proud Jewish American. I learned English, worked as a seamstress, married my husband, a physician, who had enlisted in the army in World War II, and fought and was wounded in the Third Army, fighting in the Battle of the Bulge, had four beautiful daughters, one of whom a law professor is here with me, speaking on my behalf, and lived to see eight beautiful grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. I was taken to the ghetto on the eve of Passover in 1944, the holiday of freedom. In a matter of moments, at age 14, I had my freedom ripped out from under me as I went on to the death camps of Auschwitz, Geislingen, and Dachau, and watched as my parents', older married sisters and their children, younger sisters and brothers, and countless relatives and friends, were all gassed and burned in the crematoria at Auschwitz. Thanks to all of those who liberated the camps, I recently celebrated 80 years of Passover seder and freedom in this wonderful country of America. For those who have never lost their freedom, they cannot appreciate what real freedom is. There's nothing more precious to a human being in this life than to have freedom. It breaks my heart when I see young people on college campuses desecrating the American flag, athletes refusing to stand for the national anthem, and the BDS movement, and the antisemitism that has risen throughout the world. It hurts me when people propagandize against the United States and Israel and disrespect our military, under whose blanket of freedom we are all protected each and every day. I am forever grateful that we have a, a president who stands with and is a friend to the state of Israel. When I was in Dachau, I never would have dreamed that I would live to see the 77th anniversary of the state of Israel. So I would like to thank all of our US military and all of their families, who continue to serve our country with honor. You and so many brave veterans gave your all, and so many lost their lives so that we can live as free people. To those who seek socialism, communism, or ideologies that seek to destroy our US Constitution and the values that our country stands for, to them I say, you should kiss the ground that you walk on in the United States of America, as I feel so blessed to be here, to thrive, to live in freedom, and to pursue happiness. At 97 years old, I cannot bend and kiss all of your feet on the city council as I once did when the liberators freed us from Dachau. But as a Ba'ath Kohane, a descendant from four lines of the high priests dating back to Aaron Moses's brother, I would like to express my undying gratitude to the city council of Irving, of Irvine, excuse me, for all of the liberators and their families, and to the United States of America for giving me my life and my freedom by bestowing this blessing on all of you who are present in the chamber there today. I apologize that I cannot be there because I just am recovering from a stroke on February the 9th. Yivarechacha Adonai vi yishmirecha. May God bless you and keep you. Yo'er Adonai pon avilecha vi achunecha. May God make His face to shine upon you and be gracious unto you. Yisadonai pon avilecha vi yosemlacha shalom. May God grant that all of our hostages come home safe and sound that are being held in captivity. May God grant each and every one of you a long life full of health, happiness, love, prosperity, and peace, and may God bless and protect our US military and the freedoms that they and our veterans fought so hard to preserve, the state of Israel, and forever bless and protect the United States of America. If you could please key up my mom's video, it's just a short minute of her. Thank you so much.
At this, at this time, um, at this time, we, we typically do not show videos until the end. Is this the last speaker?
Yes, Mayor, this would be the last speaker.
All right. And is the video queued up?
We have it ready to go.
All right. All right. Let's hear the video then, and then I turn it back to you, Councilmember Lou, to conclude the presentation of the proclamation, and then, of course, we'll take comments from council members. Go right ahead.
My name is Peiri Katz, and I survived in Auschwitz. It was wonderful. We had everything. We had cows, horses, geese, everything. Everybody respected them. They had the highest respect for my parents, because they were so good to everybody. My mother was a good cook, and so did all their neighbors. We were a wonderful, loving family. We shabbos, we used to go have to light the shabbos candle, say prayers. They just keep, and they pull the table, because then everything fell on the floor. Our shabbos candles, and just everything was on up on the floor. I come from a large family, I come from 11 children. We should all live to be hundred and twenty, but we didn't survive. My name is Peiri Katz, remember this.
Thank you.
And that is all the speakers.
That concludes the public comments. I turn it back to you, Councilmember Lou.
So at this time, it is my pleasure to invite forward our special guest this evening and present the proclamation. And at the same time, I would like my staff member, Sophie Nadell, to be, to read the proclamation.
Whereas Yom Hashoah, a day dedicated to remembering the 6 million lives lost in the Holocaust, a state-sponsored systemic and deliberate plan to annihilate the Jewish people by the Nazi regime and its collaborators, aligns annually with the 27th Day of Nisan on the Hebrew calendar. This day serves to honor the memory of those who were lost. It is a day of solemn remembrance and reflection, and reaffirms our community's commitment to ensure that such atrocities are never repeated.
Mayor, may I invite the council members to come down for a picture?
Sure. If there's going to be a photograph, I would suggest everyone come around here, and we'll be in front there. I would suggest everyone come around here, and we'll be in front there.
Bravo, bravo!
Thank you, thank you.
Yes. We have yet to adopt the proclamation. Would, would people please take their seats? We... Would you want to turn that over?
Yes. So if I may, if I may turn to my council colleagues for comment, and if it's okay?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Lou. And, well, we have yet to adopt the proclamation. I'm going to suggest that at this time, that we consolidate our parliamentary proceedings here by, by taking a motion to adopt the proclamation. And then, council members can speak to the motion, and at the same time incorporate in their remarks anything they would wish to say about those who called in or otherwise, all right?
Okay.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lou, would you like to move adoption of the proclamation?
Yes, if I may move to, for council to adopt the motion.
And I'll second that motion. And that allows us then to turn to our colleagues, who can comment on the motion or anything else relative to the motion. So with that, I'll call on Councilmember Treceder.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be able to speak now. I have been thinking a lot about what the Holocaust survivors have been saying in these chambers today. And I find a lot of strength from it. I also have received loud and clear the message that we must have courage to stand up to hate. That is something that nearly everybody here has said. I understand the import of this. I think often about the events that led up to the Holocaust, that led up to 6 million Jews being killed. And of course, there were the people who were doing the killing. But there were even more who just looked the other way and didn't want to make waves, and who didn't want to be involved because it was too scary. And if they had stood up, maybe the Holocaust wouldn't have happened. I have been in these chambers since October 6th. I have seen a lot. I have seen a lot of antisemitism in these chambers. It turned my stomach. I understand now. I think better, the events that led to the Holocaust. It is just a matter of looking the other way for most people. And again, I just want to return to the importance of standing up to hate. It is not simply a, it's not simply just a nice thing to do. It, it has import. It could potentially head off future Holocausts. And I would like to think it wouldn't happen here, but the Holocaust did happen. And there are people here who experienced it, and people here who had families who died from it. So I fully believe that can happen, and I take it very seriously, standing up to hate. Now, we had an example here during this meeting. We had someone call in, Mr. Derek Nishanian, who knew that these chambers would be full of members of the Jewish community, and chose to say horrible things, antisemitic things, knowing that you would have to listen to that. And I, again, took very seriously the call to have the courage to stand up to hate. Now, state law actually does not allow us to cut off speakers, public speakers, because we don't like what they say. They get to say it. But state law does allow me to respond and say, no, I reject that. This is not appropriate. And I did try to do that. And I was stopped from doing it in violation of state law. And you can see how these things happen. I'm not going to shut up. I think the implication was that by me trying to respond, that I was making waves, that it was disrespectful, disruptive. And I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that, to stand up to hate. Now, I want to say... I also want to say I was, I was personally offended by what Mr. Derek Nishanian said about Rabbi Steinberg, a very good friend of mine. I know him well. I don't think that Mr. Derek Nishanian knows him well, but I do. He's one of the kindest people I know, one of the strongest people I know. And I have seen him say to his congregation that I will stand between you and whoever comes for you. That takes a lot of courage, and I fully believe that. And I will add that I will stand in front of him and whoever might come for him. Thank you. The next meeting after October 6th, during the announcements, I expressed my dismay, my sympathy for the Jewish community. And I pledged at that time that I would do everything that I could to protect the Jewish community in Irvine, that I thought of you, and I valued you. And I hope that I have, I hope that I have fulfilled that pledge. I hope that you have seen that over the last year and a half. It's not something that you do just once. It's a consistent thing. I have paid for it. It is an honor. It is a price I am willing to pay, and I am willing to pay a lot more. I hope that you know, as long as I am in this seat, I will continue to protect you and value you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Treceder. Are there other requests to be heard on the motion? Councilmember Lou?
First, I would like to thank Councilmember Treceder for taking the time and wait for this, and thank you. I appreciate your patience. And I also want to thank everybody for coming out and showing your, sharing your story, sharing your testimonies, and showing the city what it's like to be courageous, resilient, and give hope. And I would like to respond, actually, to the caller that the city council did have a presentation in recognition of Armenian genocide in Arab-American. It's, and we did have a presentation. Maybe we should have done a better job with announcing that, so the community would know. But it was recognized, and I don't like how this was falsely accused and that we favor anybody over anybody else. The point of this is to make sure that we uplift everybody. And like I said in my big comment at the beginning, that I see my role as a public servant to give the platform for, to recognize people, to connect residents, and promote understanding and education. And this is my opportunity. And again, thank you so much for giving us that opportunity to help you in this matter. And I want to thank my council colleagues again. This presentation was, was a product of everybody's effort in the last three, four months, so thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lou. Councilmember Carol?
Great, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, just related to what my colleague said, I want to thank my colleague for really, for bringing this forward and really emceeing what was such an important and moving opportunity, presentation, to, to bring into this council chamber stories and that are truly, they're really beyond words. I'm going to have a lot less to say, and that's very unusual for an elected official because there's really no words that can describe what we've all experienced in the room tonight and what we will experience in our hearts as a result of this. We talked about it a little bit before. We had a sort of a brief thing in another room here. But I would just ask, if you would, our Vice Mayor, to talk about his personal family story with regard to the Holocaust and just kind of refocus it back on this day, if you, if you would, Vice Mayor. Thank you. But thank you, thank you all for being here and taking the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Carol. We'll now turn to Councilmember Mai, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Mai.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my fellow, my colleagues here for bringing this forward. I want to let the community know that we empathize with you. I empathize with your loss, your longstanding loss, sharing with your sorrow as well, and we'll always stand to fight with you. You know, people have asked me a little bit about my history. Some of you know some of my history. And I, and to the Holocaust deniers, you know, I carry a part of the Holocaust with me. And people say, what do you mean? Well, I wasn't going to do this, but I literally carry a piece of the Holocaust with me. So this is from the Holocaust. This is from World War II. And it is the last piece. It's the only thing that was given to me by my adopted father, who raised me. I'm named after James. His name is James Bristol. And he signed up for the war when he saw the atrocities going on in the world. He landed on D-Day. He fought through, fought through the European theater into Nazi Germany, lost his hearing, became handicapped during the war, was fully deaf, and still fought in the war. He fought in the war, and he eventually, he was under, under Patton, and they were considered Nazi hunters. They're a liberating force. And they, they, he told me this story before he passed, and he gave me this. And he told me this story. He never told me this story when I, when I was growing up. I would just hear stories that he was an officer, and they, he had a lot of memorabilia from the war. I said, how did you get that? And he said, yeah, I just picked it up somewhere. But we knew he was, his wife, my adopted mother, would tell me he was, he was considered a, a war hero, but he never spoke about it. But before he died, he told me this story when he, he marched, they marched into, into Germany, and they came across a forest. And there was line, it was lined with bodies. They followed it. They followed it to, into a, into a concentration camp. And they, they knocked down the walls of the concentration camp. There was thousands of bodies there. The SS had, had abandoned the camp because they knew the Americans were coming. And the, the prisoners and the survivors came out, hugging them, hugging him, saying thank you. But they didn't have anything to give him. They didn't have a single thing to give him. But they were, they were skilled. They were carpenters, woodworkers. So they were able to carve this, this frame for him to carry on, carry hit the picture of his wife throughout the rest of his war, through the war. And that was the only thing that he, he, he gave to me before he passed away. And these stories, I always tell this story because we need to stand against hate. These stories need to be told, so the future generations will never forget it. Some of these stories, and the stories we heard today, won't be seen in books, but they're going to be passed down by our words. And eventually, people said, James, you got to write something about this, and I will. But I'm happy to share this story with you. My father was, he was a, he was a war hero. He stayed in, he stayed in Germany after the war, even though he was fully deaf. His, his job was to, after the war, go back, go back to his paths and recover dog tags of fallen soldiers climbing into the tanks. And he, he, he was so traumatized by this, he never talked about it. But he would, he would also get the IDs from the, from the concentration camp as well. And, you know, I just wanted to share this story with you guys, and I hope that you can share it as well. I, I stand with you guys as well. So thank you for, for listening to me on this day, and I'm, and I'm glad to share this with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mai. Councilmember Goh, did you have anything? If not, we can move on to a vote. If you have something to say, I'd be happy to recognize you now. No? All right. Let me just say, thank you to Councilmember Lou and the role that Councilmember Carol as well played in helping shape this proclamation in this evening's presentation. I want to thank our city staff, my own staff, and the representatives from the larger Jewish community for the role that they played in pulling together this proclamation and presentation. And of course, I especially want to thank the wonderful people who gave remarkable testimonials as to direct and indirect experience from the horrors of the Holocaust. We will call for a vote, but the words, of course, never forget and never again are very meaningful and guiding many, many of our lives. And may we adopt this motion and proclamation in that spirit that will do our part for a better future. With that, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Member Goh?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
Yes.
Mayor Egrin?
Yes.
Carrie Six Zero?
Thank you. Thank you all. Those who wish to stay, you're certainly welcome. Our next presentation involves National Police Week. This is a proclamation recognizing May 11th to 17th, 2025, as National Police Week. At this time, I'd like to remind those who wish to comment on this presentation, those who wish to make public comment electronically. Now's the time to raise your hand electronically, enter the queue, and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. But at this time, it's my pleasure to invite forward Police Chief Michael Kent and members of the Irvine Police Honor Guard. And I'll step down to the podium, so we might continue. of the Irvine Police Honor Guard, and I'll step down to the podium so we might continue. Welcome, welcome to you all. Each year during the month of May, memorials for police officers killed in the line of duty are held in state capitals across our nation and in Washington, DC. Over the past several years, the Irvine Police Department has sent representatives to the California Police Officer Memorial in Sacramento and the National Peace Officer Memorial in Washington, DC. The City of Irvine recognizes those officers throughout the nation who sacrificed their lives in service to their communities. On behalf of the Irvine City Council and the Irvine community, we thank all our public safety officers, each and every one of them, for the vital service that you provide by protecting our residents, businesses, and visitors to our city as well. And you manage year after year to keep Irvine among the safest cities in America. So it's now my pleasure, my honor really, to read and present the proclamation. So Chief, do you want to come over here as well? Because I want you, I want you at my side here when we present this. I'll go ahead and read it, or would you like to?
Go ahead.
All right. This is a proclamation recognizing National Police Week. Whereas the President and Congress of the United States have designated May 11th to 17th, 2025, as National Police Week, which coincides with Peace Officers Memorial Day on May 15th, and whereas the members of the Irvine Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of those living and working in the City of Irvine, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that the members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve and protect the people. And whereas the men and women of the Irvine Police Department, in partnership with the community, work tirelessly to maintain the City of Irvine as the safest city in the nation with a population over 300,000 people. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Irvine does hereby proclaim May 11th to 17th, 2025, as National Police Week, and urges all citizens to commemorate law enforcement officers, past and present, who have dedicated their professional lives to uphold the law and ensure public safety. The City Council of the City of Irvine further calls upon residents and employees of Irvine to observe May 15th, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous actions, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community. Chief, thank you. Thank you all. Let's give them a big round of applause, all right? Chief, yeah. I'm going, I'm going to give you one more chance, Chief. One more chance if you'd like to say something. I, I had a thought myself as I was reading through. Irvine, of course, is more than 50 years old. We've had our police department, our own independent police department, for more than 50 years. And fortunately, in that entire time, we haven't lost one police officer in the line of duty. Up till now, I've hesitated to say that publicly. We obviously don't want to bring some kind of bad karma to bear here, but our police, we're so proud of our police department and the wonderful standards that you employ here in the city, not only keeping us safe, but as one of those whereas clauses stated, seem to it that we're in a community that's not only safe, but where we feel and are free and able to move about and enjoy the benefits of community life. So I've, I've said much more. Did you want to say one or two things? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the kind words and obviously the proclamation. On behalf of the men and women of the Irvine Police Department, we appreciate your continued support, and obviously, members of City Council, thank you for your continued support as well. To the Irvine community, our residents, our businesses, and everybody else in the community that really makes up this fine city, thank you for your continued support of, of the Irvine Police Department for the last 50 years. This is our 50th anniversary. We turned 50 years old, so we're really excited about that milestone. And to the men and women of the Irvine Police Department, it's an absolute honor and privilege to be your chief. You're truly the engine that drives this organization. So thank you, appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you. I think what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do is invite our colleagues down, and let's see if we can take a photograph. We have not yet actually adopted the proclamation, but I have reason to believe it's going to pass unanimously, all right? Thank you.
Get here, buddy.
Oh, my God. Hey. Good to see you guys. How are you? You guys are all tall, so you have no problem with pictures.
I know. I'm the front row. I'm the front row.
All right, everybody. Ready? One, two, three. I know, one more. One, two, three. Rest your hair. All right, everybody. Ready? One, two, three. I know, one more. One, two, three. Rest your hair. Hey. And yours. Yeah. You ready? What's up?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lou. We have some citizens out there, do we, to be heard?
Not for this item. For general public comments, we do.
General, okay. So, good. There's a motion properly before us, and of course, I call on my colleagues if they wish to have anything to say on the motion to adopt the proclamation. Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Treseder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
And Mayor Egren.
Yes.
Carrie Six Zero.
Thank you. All right. We move now to public comments for non-agendized items, which was to have started at 5:30. We allow a half hour for members of the public to offer comments on non-agendized items. Any member of the public may address the City Council on items within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on the agenda. If, depending on how many requests to be heard, we'll adjust the time limits accordingly. With that, I'll turn to the city clerk and ask, are there public commenters who have requested to be heard on non-agendized items?
Thank you, Mayor. We have 10 requests to speak, nine in person, one on Zoom.
10. Why don't we? I'll tell you what, let's, let's see if we can set it at two minutes. If we were to set it at three minutes, it would be not accepted anymore. So why don't we set it at two? And if somebody wants to enter the queue, we've got a little space that way. All right, commenters will have two minutes. With that, I'll turn to our clerk. Please call the first speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call forward Darren Parker, Christina Shay, and Kristen, Susan Sayer, and Doi Viet Lee, and Jason Gershfield. And we'll start with Darren Parker.
What a, what a lively meeting this has been. I, I'm, I want to just talk about the dog park briefly. Before I do, I want to express our gratitude to your city manager, Oliver Chee, for the time he's given, Critt, myself, as, as representatives of the Irvine Dog Park Association this week. One of the things that was so difficult about the decision that seemed to be made at the last meeting to take the dog park away from, from the Oak Creek Improvement Project was all the work that had been put in, and all, all the progress that had been made, all the funds that had been appropriated. And we don't want to start from scratch with that project all over again. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to, I'm going to challenge you to do one of two things. Either reinstate the dog park to the Oak Creek Improvement Project plan and take a vote and show us where you all stand on that, or find some way to, to reappropriate those funds over to the, the existing Irvine Dog Park for improvements at an accelerated rate so that, so that we don't have to start from scratch again. I don't know if that's logistically possible. I would like, I would like maybe a response to that, i- if possible. Is that something that we can do? Can we, can we do one of those two things and, and continue this project one way or the other?
We don't typically try to kind of negotiate when this next comes up to the City Council or how, but I would encourage you to be in touch with our city manager, and the idea that you offered might be worthy of consideration, even placement on a council agenda. But we, I don't think we can respond immediately tonight to that, but feel free to be in touch with the city manager if you would, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Shay and Kristen.
Welcome.
Good evening. That was, I'm really glad that we got to be here this evening for the Holocaust presentation. So Mayor and councilmembers and city staff, I'm very pleased to be here this evening. You all know me, I'm Christina Shay, and I'm here with Kristen Manna, who is our Development Director for Arts and Learning Conservatory, which is a nonprofit dedicated to providing high-quality music and performing arts education to elementary students. And right now, we're passing out our little bags of information. We recently celebrated our 20th anniversary. We have been running our program in 50 schools in Orange County, and you may not be aware of it, but 16 schools in the City of Irvine. Deborah Wundercheck is the founder and CEO of the Arts and Learning Conservatory and a passionate advocate for the arts education. With nearly 30 years of experience, she has brought high-quality art programs to thousands of students across Southern California. The Arts and Learning Conservatory was established to address the gap in art programs being cut from our schools. Music and theater education have demonstrated significant benefits for elementary school students. They enhance academic performance, support mental well-being, and foster essential life skills such as communication, collaboration, and self-confidence. So we recently emailed you all an invite for tomorrow night, we have another one in May, but tomorrow night, we're doing a tour of the theater, and it'd just be hour, hour and a half. We'd love you to come, and all the information is in the bags there. And so with that, I want to thank you for your, your consideration for this program. It's wonderful here in the city, and we would like you to just come along and try to get to know it. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the gift, and we'll be, we'll be reading what's inside, I promise. Thank you.
Susan Sayer.
Yes. Good evening. I know, my name's Susan Sayer, and I know we're going to be discussing later the issue of Irvine Connect expansion. Right now, I understand that there's going to be, there is concerns about increasing ridership and the funding for, for Irvine Connect, and I have some questions related to these issues I'd like to ask. First of all, is public transportation considered to be part of Irvine's infrastructure and thus to be funded in part by development infrastructure fees? Second question, can businesses that benefit from public transportation traffic, such as Irvine's tourism industry consisting of hotels, sports, and entertainment venues such as amphitheaters, museums, water parks, the businesses and shopping centers be required to contribute to the cost of public transportation via licensing and other routine fees as, because I've been told by businesses and shopping center management that businesses are leaving Irvine because there is insufficient customer traffic to sustain the businesses. Public transportation can serve to increase customer traffic and benefit business employees. Third question, can development fees and developers' traffic remedial fees be used to contribute to the cost of development and maintaining the Irvine Connect public transportation program? And lastly, shopping centers and community parking availability may be adversely impacted by increased housing development. Can Irvine pride, provide free park-and-ride parking lots that are located on Irvine Connect routes that would benefit business, tourism, and entertainment customers and their employees? Thank you.
Doi Viet Lee.
Members of the City Council, and Mr. Mai specifically. Mr. Mai, in eight days' time, it will be 50 years since the end of the Vietnam War. It is estimated that there are close to 9,000 Vietnamese-Americans who are eligible for deportation, but as you may observe, the country many of these people would be deported to no longer exists. Mr. Mai, Vietnamese in Vietnam do not think of us. They do ask about those returned. They wonder what, why the remnants of the Republic would return their own children back to the enemy that tortured them. What, what could possibly merit such cruelty? And I find myself at a loss, a loss for words with which to reply. As it is your party that prosecutes our people thusly, I would ask, ask that you have an answer to their inquiry. Why is it that so many of us have seemingly forgotten their obligation to their Don Bao, those of the same blood? I have seen with my own eyes the bodies, the missing eyes, the teeth of those who survived prison camps, the restless nights, the shallow graves of people lost at sea. They are our countrymen and our community members. How cruel can we be to even imagine, let alone prosecute, sending back, sending them back to a country that broke themself? Those who would cheer sending Don Bao back to their jailers have forgotten their obligation to protect all of us. Vietnamese cannot be free unless all of us are free. Why are we doing the work of the enemies that sent us here? The conditions of a host nation do not supersede our obligation to one another, Mr. Mai. We have no place to return to. To wit, Vietnam has not even accepted the return of our countrymen to Vietnam, and accordingly, our own people sit incarcerated in perpetuity on account of having no home to return to. This cannot stand. This cannot stand. Our obligation, as ever, remains the same. Today, as it was 50 years ago, to care for Dong Bao as we should. 50 years has not been long enough for us to learn that lesson.
Thank you, your time is up.
But I continue to hope that the day we learn comes soon.
Thank you for your comments.
Jason Gershfield. And if I could also call forward Krit, Carol, Alan Meyerson, Leila Yu, and Anna Zhang.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I want to respond to Nutball Nashanian. And I know that I'm taking a bit of a risk doing this because last time I called him out in public comment, he left a rather rude message on my private voicemail, which was very surprising. But I guess divorce lawyers have good private investigators who can help them find that sort of thing. And I wanted to say I fully support recognizing and remembering the Armenian genocide. And I disagree, actually, with Israel's policy towards Azerbaijan. I also, by the way, disagree with the fact that Armenia has been conducting weapons deals and joint military exercises with the Iranian terror regime. So obviously, no country is perfect. But there's really no reason for Jews and Armenians to fight. So stop trying to drive a wedge with these increasingly insane comments. So this is also as good of a time as any, by the way, to say that we should get rid of Zoom comments. They're not good for the city. Most other cities don't do this. I've been to a few other city councils, surprisingly, and this is a bit of a quirk of Irvine. Anybody who wants to come in here and spew their articulate, eloquent speech should do so in person. The face-to-face communication is an integral part of human nature. That's why I always oppose mask mandates. And I think that we should get rid of that vestige of the pandemic. So with regards to the Irvine Company, I think I'm going to make a bikini calendar, and I think I'd look great in a bikini, of every single bullshit repair that they, excuse my language, every single unnecessary industrial machinery repair that they do in my apartment complex, because there's one every month. This month, it was industrial tree trimming. I got two days' warning. And, you know, I understand repairs have to be done. I respect that. But they need to have better communication. And if they're going to keep doing this, taking away my right to quiet enjoyment of the property, that's a right I have, then they should have a rip.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your views with us.
Krit?
Hello again. I'm here for the Dog Parks Association. Over the past year, we've had multiple meetings with the city staff and the leadership. And we've seen the conversation and destinations shift. The amount of flurry of activity, including today's meetings, is proof that awareness is rising and that the momentum is building. What Irvine needs now is a dog park master plan, a comprehensive citywide strategy that maps out where, how, and when we add the dog parks our residents deserve. Irvine has always been a leader in parks and planning. We're confident that the City Council shares this position and vision. Dog parks aren't just about dogs. They build community. They can bridge social divisions. And they contribute to mental and emotional wellness for people of all ages and walks of life. A strong dog park network will make Irvine's park system even more welcoming and family-friendly. As we improve and expand, I hope no, I have no doubt Irvine will land on the top 10 list for the most dog-friendly cities in America. We commend the City Council and staff for their commitment to excellence, and we're here to help turn that excellence into action.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody for what was really an emotional and special evening. And to Melinda and Mike for having the idea and sharing in the idea, and Kathleen and James for your comments. I really appreciate it. I wanted to talk about the Brown Act. And watching the council now for, since November of 2023, I've been regularly watching. And this is really a comment to you, Mr. Melching. It shouldn't be that I don't understand still how these rules work. And it is your job, representing the city, to know the answer when Kathleen or Mike ask you a question. I can simply look it up on my phone that there's no separate difference for the mayor versus the rest of the council in terms of how the Brown Act works. And if Mr. Larry Agron, the mayor, has addressed me multiple times at this podium, so can Kathleen address somebody? So can Melinda or Mike, William or James, the council members? It is inappropriate for you not to be able to answer Councilmember Carol properly. It is inappropriate for you not to give Kathleen her due time when she asks it. And according to the laws, as I understand it, and I'm not a lawyer, but this is something you can look up, the Brown Act applies to everybody equally. The mayor does not hold a special stance with the Brown Act. And so I would like to see more often that the respect, he said, there's stability, order, and respect. I've not seen any of that. And I'd like to see that more often. I would like there to be stability in the rules. I would like to be order where the rules are enforced properly. And I'd like to see respect, particularly to our female council members who oftentimes are given a lot of disrespect on the dais. And it's really hard to watch as a woman to see that. There is an organization called the League of Women Voters who do an excellent job of tracking Brown Act violations. And if you look up the city of Irvine, unfortunately, you have a lot of Brown Act violations. And they're getting more and more. And I really just think it's time for us to have a sense where the rules are enforced equally and nobody's given a greater sense of entitlement than anybody else on the council.
Thank you, your time is up.
I'm going to take the liberty.
Of course, you're going to address me, yes.
I'm going to take the liberty right now of turning to our city attorney to explain what transpired. My council colleague said that, and I let it pass, that I had violated the Brown Act. I did not commit a violation of the Brown Act tonight. But I'll let the city attorney explain. And you suggested that he violated the Brown Act. If you really want to get an answer to your question, let's turn to the city attorney right now because he explained it very well, in my judgment. But please, explain it again.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, the Brown Act allows for council responses to public commenters. The Brown Act does not specify where in the consideration of an item those council responses come. The mayor is the chair of the meeting, the primary parliamentarian. So in the absence of a rule, and there is no rule in the Brown Act for this specific question about when a member of the council can respond to a member of the public. In the absence of the rule, the chair makes the initial determination. Councilmember Treceder asked you for an opportunity to speak. She would be right to say that in prior occasions and in this occasion, we have facilitated people responding right after a public commenter spoke. That would be accurate. But it isn't required, and you made a ruling. Councilmember Treceder, as is her right under our municipal code, appealed your ruling. You recognized it as an appeal, and you asked for a second. That's not a Brown Act issue. And it isn't that you have superior rights under the Brown Act. It is that you are the parliamentarian, and you were making a parliamentary ruling. That parliamentary ruling, again, was appealable. You recognized the appeal. You asked for a second. Initially, there was a second, and the second was withdrawn. That's, apologize for the more lengthy-than-I-wanted explanation, but that's the start, in the middle, and the end of it.
And let me just, in my own defense of my judgment, the reason we don't like, the reason I prefer, let me say this. The reason I prefer that if any of us have responses to people who are coming forward, the reason I prefer to wait to the end than council members can after five, or 10, or 20, or 30 people have made their comments, council members can be recognized and have the time to respond briefly to one or more of the speakers. I've made the judgment, if we didn't do it that way, if we let each council member have the right to respond briefly to each person who comes up here, we would have nothing but back and forth all night, and we would never get to our regular council business. So, but I want to be clear, Mr. City Attorney. I did not violate the Brown Act. Is that correct?
No.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, yes, that's correct. No, you didn't violate the Brown Act.
Thank you. By the way, Mr. Melching has prepared over the years. The Brown Act is a far-reaching act. It doesn't just govern council meetings. It governs a whole bunch of things. And City Attorney Melching has, over the years, prepared many memos about various aspects of the Brown Act, as well as one that introduces people as council members to what it is they're supposed to do. I would suggest you make those available publicly and avail yourself of the opportunity to speak with our city attorney.
I mean, I think you proved my point. You just spoke to me for over a minute, and it's not a brief comment. And you don't allow anybody else to speak. So you do dominate how, there does seem to be an inequality here where certain people are not allowed to speak. And then you overspeak and get into debates with people in public comments, which I'm fairly certain is not something that's supposed to happen. That's my reading of the Brown Act, is that it's not a back and forth. I'm supposed to be able to come here and speak, and it's not a debate with the mayor. And this has happened more than once. So I just don't feel that the stability, order, and respect is coming across properly. And I would like to see that the council members get the proper respect.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Good evening again, council members. Alan Meyerson, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest you don't waste your time trying to explain to people, giving them an answer that they're asking for because apparently, people don't know how to listen. I understood exactly what Mr. Melching was saying earlier, and I thought he explained it perfectly clear. It was perfectly clear to me. Regarding the OCPA, I wanted to say that I hope the city gets out of the OCPA. I've noticed that they're spending a lot of our money on marketing, a lot of it on marketing. And I've also noticed that when people show up here to speak in favor of the OCPA, they're almost, 99, I would say 99.9% of them are being paid by somebody. They're being paid by Climate Action Campaign. They might even be paying, being paid by OCPA. I'm not sure about that. But I know they're being paid by somebody. So it's their jobs. It's not necessarily because they're really for clean air, but it's their jobs. And when you have a job to do and you're being paid to do it, you do it, whether you believe it or you don't believe it. You're getting paid to do it, so you do it. The other thing I wanted to say, I was glad I was here tonight for the Holocaust Remembrance Ceremony. I found it a pleasure. I found that the mayor managed it very well. The only sad part was, at the very end, one of the council members decided to hijack the ceremony and make it all about themselves. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Leila Yu?
Good evening, honorable members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak with you today. My name is Leila Yu, and I am a member and leader advocate for Kids for Casa. I am here on behalf of court-appointed special advocates of Orange County, but are known as Casa OC. Casa provides a powerful voice and meaningful connection for children in the foster care system who have experienced abuse, neglect, and abandonment. Our trained volunteers advocate for these in youth, court, school, and the community, ensuring their needs are met and their voices are heard. Casa is celebrating 40 years of support for youth in foster care. Nationally, there are over 950 Casa programs. But here in Orange County, we currently have more than 3,000 children in the foster care system. And Casa OC serves over 1,300 of them each year through our advocacy. These youth live in foster homes, group homes, and with extended families, and range in age from infants to young adults. Since California passed the AB 12, Casa has proudly extended support to youth in foster care up to age 21. Our volunteers are committed and compassionate. They serve for at least two years, meeting regularly with their youth and attending court hearings every six months to advocate directly to the judge. Today, I'm here to invite you to be a part of our ninth annual Kids for Casa Pinwheel Project, taking place on May 31 at Fashion Island. In honor of Foster Care Awareness Month, we will plant 2,915 pinwheels, each one representing a child in Orange County's foster care system. The pinwheel has become a national symbol of child abuse prevention. It represents the joyful, safe, and carefree childhood that every child deserves. You can sponsor a pinwheel for just $10. And every sponsorship helps raise awareness, supports Casa's advocacy efforts, and shines a light on the needs of most vulnerable children.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you for your comments tonight and for the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Zhang. And Anna, you have 90 seconds.
Hi, my name is Anna Zhang. I've lived in Coyle Hill for most of my life, and I just want to reiterate my support for the dog park. I know that everyone's like, no one's really against it. But I'd really like some more clear answers about what's happening because all we have is a lot of gossip on Nextdoor and a very, very astute volunteer who's heading up the Irvine Dog Parks Association. But other than that, we would like more clear communication about what's happening because I don't know about the rest of you guys, but it's really hard to make friends as an adult and like, not have to spend a ton of money doing it. And the dog park has been a really great place for me to meet a great group of friends, and my dog gets to play, and he's happy and socialized. And it's the main reason I stay in Irvine because our dog parks, it's so good. And I just want reiteration that, or just assurance that that's going to stay that way and that we're going to always have a dog park because we've had a lot of heavy topics tonight. But at the end of the day, don't we all just want to cuddle with a cute dog, have some good time with your friends and your family? And that's the perfect place to do it, the dog park. So I hope that we can get more clear answers. I know no one's really against it, but I just want to reiterate our support and not let it die down, that we're still asking for it.
Well, thank you, and I understand. I, thank you for your comments. And my guess is, because I know he and others are working on it, you'll be seeing the dog park matter on the agenda at some point soon, okay? I think we're getting there.
Our next speaker is telephone number 347. 347, you may unmute your mic.
Yes, this is Dee Fox. Tonight, I'm going to talk about DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our country has been diverse since the beginning of time. Most of us have parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents who are from other countries. Most of us have parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents who are from other countries. This isn't new to any of us. We also have differing opinions on how we see things. This gives us the opportunity to explore our differences and look at someone else in a different light, whether we agree or not. We can respect each other without fear of retribution. At the same time, we have commonality, where we can come together because of our shared experience or values. The word equity was introduced ever so subtly to replace the word equality. As an example, in terms of employment, equity seeks to give minorities preferential treatment in hiring, regardless of experience or education, whereas equality provides the same level of opportunity and assistance to all segments of society, regardless of race or gender. To give preferential treatment because of someone's race is demeaning to that race. It implies that they are not valued as being equal in our society, and this way of thinking sets us back generations. Inclusion is the practice of helping everyone to feel as if they belong. Equity takes away from that when it concentrates on, on race. It is the exclusion of all that are not in the minority. This DEA program not only contradicts its meaning, but it is race-based, which demeans the value of minorities that want to be recognized as equals. Inclusivity is supported by our diverse community, but when equity is introduced into this equation, it takes away from the inclusiveness that we all strive for. It's wrong, and it's racist, and we should know better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next.
Our next speaker is Eric Nishanian. Mr. Nishanian, you may unmute your mic, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you, council members. Mayor Aggron, I just want to state that I'm not a coward or a nut job. Larry and Mike, you guys know that, I've come down to city council and spoken, uh, many times in person, and have caused somewhat of an uproar over Farakhan's involvement with Azerbaijan and Turkey, uh, even, uh, you know, to the point where there's other arminians that came into, into city council chambers and spoke in person with me. I did not say anything offensive to him, he said that I was a coward. So I found him on the internet by myself, because the information is out there, and I offered him the opportunity to come to my law firm and speak to me in person, if he, if he'd so like, or anywhere else for that matter. And anybody else is invited to do that. I've been here for a long time, my family's been here longer than Larry's, uh, and one, you know, are working at, at Floor. I used to summer camp where Villasiana stands, where the only thing there was Bob Floor's gymnasium. So, not a coward, not a nut job, and as far as Zoom, uh, Zoom offers ADA, uh, participant, participation. And, like I said before, uh, state legislature is considering making all, uh, council meetings across the state, uh, Zoom, uh, accessible. So, uh, the, the city was, uh, innovative in adopting Zoom, and, uh, canceling it now would be contrary to its own innovation and, uh, to, uh, the, the way our state legislature is going to go, or seems to be, uh, going with making it statewide mandates.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Nishanian, for your comments.
And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, that, uh, that does it. I assume my colleagues don't have any, any responses, short or long, to, uh, any of the, uh, commenters. That being the case, uh, we move along now to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I don't have an extensive report, I just wanted to share with the council that our very own Maria Ferris, who is standing over by the doorway, recently earned her Certified Municipal Clerk designation. It's a very challenging designation to earn, um, it's a mark of excellence in the city clerk's profession. I wanted to take a moment just to embarrass her a little bit, um, and let her know how much we all appreciate her. Congratulations, Mayor.
And, and we appreciate, we appreciate how much she helps us. That's it? Okay, uh, with the conclusion of the city manager's report, we now move on to announcements, committee reports, council reports, uh, my colleagues have an opportunity to briefly describe, uh, any of those things that they've been involved in. Councilmember Liu.
Thank you. This past week, Councilmember Go and I had the pleasure of visiting the Irvine Ranch Water District. It was a great opportunity to learn more about the viral, uh, vital role they play, not just in Orange County, but throughout Southern California. And, um, the second one is the Kids Art Contest is still open for submission. In partnership with South Coast Chinese Culture Association and Pretend City, we're inviting young artists to showcase their creativity. The deadline to submit artwork is end of this month, April thirtieth, and select winner will have their artwork displayed on the walls in my office. Next, I recently visited the Orange County Housing Finance, uh, represented the Orange County Housing Finance Trust, um, and visited the new sixty-five unit affordable senior housing community in Lake Forest. It's a great example of, um, how we can provide accessible housing for our aging residents, and now affordable house, uh, apartment homes will be available at the Cartwell, uh, Cartwright, I'm sorry, Cartwright Family Apartment located at one seven eight six one Cartwright Road in the heart of the Irvine Business Complex. This community will offer sixty units with anticipated availability starting in June twenty twenty-five. To join the interest list, please visit ACCOC.org. Next, my team and I also had an incredible tour of Families Forward, where we learned about the powerful impact of affordable housing, and how it has, uh, disowned individuals experiencing homelessness. Organizations like Families Forward, along with Irvine Care, South County Outreach, and other existing community partners, play a critical role. It's essential that we collaborate with them to strengthen our effort and avoid duplications of services. In March, OCFA responded to a total of sixteen hundred fifteen incidents. These included, um, a thousand and ten rescue and EMS calls, uh, two hundred and eight good and ten calls, a hundred and eight service calls, a hundred and fall, uh, a hundred and four false alarms, and ninety-one traffic incidents, among others. Thank you to OCFA for their ongoing efforts to protecting, in protecting the residents in Irvine. And as your OC Sanitation Board Representative, I've been, um, participating in our strategic, um, planning policy workshops, where I gained understanding of OC sanitation's policy objectives and goals, as well as the implementation strategies. Next, mark your calendars, our office is hosting a wildfire prevention plan event with the Orange County Fire Authority on May nineteenth, from six to eight PM, at OCFA headquarters. You'll hear from OCFA, the Irvine Police Department, the Irvine Ranch Conservancy, and SoCal Edison about wildfire preparedness and safety. Last, please join the Irvine Junior Games on Sunday, May fourth, which is Star Wars Eight. From nine AM to six PM, this annual track and field event is open to Irvine Unified Schools District students in grades four through eight, and serves as a key fundraiser for the Irvine Children's Fund. Proceeds help provide scholarship for before and after-school children, childcare, to mid- and low-income working families in the district. For more, um, event and ticket information, please visit IrvineJuniorGames.org. And this concludes my announcement.
Thank you, Councilmember Liu. Councilmember Go.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a slide as well. Yeah, good evening, everyone. Last week, at OCFA's board meeting, Agenda Item Eight Point Two, Solar Rebate and EV Charger Rebate Programs passed unanimously. Since my appointment on the OCFA board, I have been working with OCFA to get solar battery EV charger rebate program up and running, and I'm thrilled it's finally happening. The solar and battery rebate program will provide a thousand dollar rebate for solar panels and battery storage, or just battery storage systems alone. The EV charger rebate program will provide a not-to-exceed thousand dollar rebate for residential Level Two EV chargers on the OC marketplace, making them no cost after rebate. This is a big win, as we advocate for more community benefits from OCFA. Next slide. Uh, please also join us May sixth at the Great Park Live for the State of the Great Park. As Vice Chair of the Great Park Board, the Representative for District Two, and a resident of the Great Park neighborhood, it's been amazing to see and be part of the progress that's been done so far. We will be exploring the past, celebrating the present, and envisioning the future of the Great Park. I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Go. Any other requests? There being none, I think we can, uh, move on to the next item on our council agenda. You're looking at me, Mr. Peterson, as though I omitted something, have I?
No, I just thought you had an announcement, Mayor.
I had one? Did you leave one for me? Ah, here it is, okay. Well, then I will make this brief announcement, and this is regarding Ciclo Irvine. In less than two weeks, we will celebrate community, connection, and clean air at our Second Annual Car-Free Open Streets Event Ciclo Irvine. Join us on Saturday, May third, from eleven AM to four PM, to stroll, bike, and roll along a one-point-four-mile car-free stretch of Campus Drive between University Drive and Culver Drive. Ciclo Irvine highlights the city's commitment to community engagement, sustainability, and environmentally conscious means of travel, and we encourage participants to experience Irvine's public spaces and local businesses in a new and reimagined way, with live music, art, and engaging activities for all. I want to extend my gratitude to our presenting sponsors, UC Irvine and UCI Health. I also want to thank our open street advocate sponsor, Orange County Power Authority, and our open street fan sponsors, Great Park Neighborhoods, Irvine Company, Orange County Cycling Business Coalition, PSQ Productions, Reyes Coca-Cola Bottling, and Waste Management. Their support is crucial to ensuring we can come together as a community for this event. To learn more about Ciclo Irvine and our sponsors, please visit cityofirvine.org/cicloirvine. That's it? We want to have as many participating as possible. Oh, that prompted Vice Mayor and Councilmember Mai-
Definitely prompted.
-to chime in here. Here we go, all right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to add, uh, onto Director or Councilmember Go's, um, comments on OCFA. We are working with OCFA, um, we, well, I believe that, uh, from our position, they should be doing more. We will be pushing for more. Um, these solar rebate programs are a, a great start, it's just a beginning, um, it's very minor, what, um, it, it's a great gesture, but, uh, we're going to be demanding a lot more. Um, just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Also, um, also, I, I want to do something a little bit differently here, um, if you could, uh, play the, the video, I have a video queued up here as well. Uh, it's just April, um, from the last meeting, just a couple of the things that I have, uh, over the past... Tom, are you there? There we go. So it's just a little promise of the community, I'm grateful to be here, and also, uh, to have this platform to help the many people here. Um, I just wanted to remind the community that, uh, our door is wide open. I, I may represent District Number Three, but, uh, also, uh, just representing the whole city, so feel free, our team's ready to, uh, support you. Uh, our doors are wide open. Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Mai, and, uh, thanks to all the wonderful, uh, nonprofit organizations with which we interact, uh, day in and day out. All right, uh, with that, uh, we've had our announcements, committee reports, council reports, now we go to additions and deletions to the agenda. I'll turn to our city manager to ask if there are any additions or deletions.
Mr. Mayor, there's one late, um, adjustment to the city council agenda. We wanted to request that Item Three Point Six, which is the Agenda Item Title Confirmation of Unpaid Costs Incurred by the City to Abate Public Nuisance Conditions at eighteen fifty-one Kettering Street, that that item be continued for one meeting. We received word late yesterday that the property owner, um, at that particular, um, location has retained new legal counsel. They reached out to the city attorney's office, we had a quick discussion today, um, and are requesting, um, short continuance to allow us to have an additional discussion, to see if we might be able to resolve the matter differently.
Well, thank you, we hope that's a favorable turn of events. So Item Three Point Six will now be taken off the agenda.
Correct. Outside of that, there are no, uh, other changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. That allows us to move on to the Consent Calendar, which tonight consists of Items Two Point One to Two Point Eight. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the city manager to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion. Are there any such requests at this time? All right, uh, I'll, uh, again remind those who wish to participate via Zoom, as long as it lasts, to, uh, enter the speaker's queue now by raising your hand electronically. And, uh, with that, is there, uh, are there any requests to be heard, uh, from the public on public, on, uh, Consent Calendar items?
No, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk tells us there are no requests to be heard on the Consent Calendar tonight. A motion would be in order, uh, I'll move adoption of Items Two Point One to Two Point Eight.
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember Carroll. All those in favor, well, let's see, we have to take a roll call vote on this. Please, Carl, call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Go?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Trishider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
Yes.
And Mayor Aggron?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
All right, and we move on, finally, to council business under Item Three. Item Three Point One, uh, would the clerk please call this, um, item by subject and title?
Annexation of Open Space Area R.
Excellent, um, Annexation of Open Space Area R. We have a staff representative here. Uh, please introduce yourself, and, uh, then we'll, uh, we'll proceed with hearing your presentation, and maybe have a few questions for you, all right?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members.
I'm, I'm going to ask a favor before you give us your name. Could you tilt your screen down a little bit so we can see your face? Just pull it from the bottom. No, you're doing fine, just, there you go, that's better.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. My name is Andrew Pham, Principal Civil Engineer in the Public Works and Sustainability Department. We are here to please to present the annexation of Open Space Area R and surrounding areas. The city is approximately sixty-six square miles. The current boundary is shown in purple. The approximate location of the proposed annexation is located in the northeast corner of the city, and is shown in the red triangle, uh, rectangle. The proposed annexation would increase the city boundary to approximately sixty-eight square miles. Open Space Area R is currently an unincorporated area of the county of Orange. It is approximately five hundred and eighty-four acres, or point nine square miles. This area is owned by the Irvine Company and has been offered to the city as open space as part of the Irvine Company's development of Portola Springs. The city has not yet accepted the offer from the Irvine Company. Since this area is currently outside the city's boundary, staff is recommending the annexation of Area R into city limits. Staff recommends the annexation for the following reasons. First, the development of Planning Area Six is nearing completion, as construction of residential development is either complete or underway at all developer parcels. Second, the city would be subject to property tax or city-owned property outside the city boundary. Third, the city's planned joint training public safety facility project that is being coordinated between the city's police department and OCFA is planned to be located in Area R, and permitting would be made more efficient if the property were located in the city limits. Lastly, the Gateway Development and Preserve Open Space is located adjacent to Area R to the northwest, and to facilitate enhanced trail connectivity, it would make sense to have Area R located within city limits. The annexation process is a multi-step process involving other agencies and entities such as the County of Orange, LAFCO, environmental agencies, and property owners. The Regulatory Authority for City Boundary Adjustment is LAFCO, also known as Local Agency Formation Commission of Orange County. This entity provides oversight of geographic boundaries of public service providers. The entire process would be completed once the city receives a certificate of completion from LAFCO. The total estimated cost of the annexation is three hundred and ten thousand dollars. The major component of the cost would be impairing the environmental documents. Staff proposes to use one hundred and thirty-five thousand from an existing Public Works and Sustainability Budget Line item for the remainder of this fiscal year. The remaining one hundred and seventy-five thousand would be included in next fiscal year's budget appropriation. Along with Open Space Area R, there is currently a small notch area in the Gateway Development that is not within the city's current boundary, shown here in yellow. This area consists of approximately one-point-two acres of land. The proposed annexation would include the small notch area that is currently outside the city's boundary. In preliminary discussions with LAFCO, LAFCO indicated the city cannot only annex Open Space Area R and the small Gateway Development Notch, and the small Gateway Development Notch area. They mentioned that- They mentioned that the annexed property must be contiguous with existing city boundary and cannot create an island or peninsula of property that is not part of the city boundary. As a result, the blue area shows the proposed annexation area. This would also include property owned by Caltrans, which is State Route 261 and 241, IRWD, which is the Siphon Reservoir, County of Orange, which is the Bee Canyon Access Road, Lutheran High, which is the private sports complex of Karine Lutheran High School. The total proposed annexation area is approximately 1,218 acres or 1.9 square miles. As mentioned, the approximate cost of the annexation is $310,000. The total estimated time of completion for the annexation process is approximately 14 months. Approval of tonight's action item will authorize staff to begin the process of annexations, which includes preparing the submittal package to LAFCO. A majority of the submittal items can be submitted to LAFCO in the next several months, except for the tax agreement and environmental documents. Both the tax agreement with the county and environmental documents will be presented to city council for consideration and approval prior to submitting them to LAFCO for approval. As anticipated, the entire annexation process would be completed by June of next year. Staff recommends authorizing staff to pursue the annexation of Open Space Area R and authorizing the city manager to execute agreements and contracts as it relates to annexation of Open Space Area R. This concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll turn to my colleagues, but maybe I'll just start with one question. Just how large an area is this? It seems really quite small, am I right?
The area in blue right here is approximately 1,218 acres or 1.9 square miles.
Oh, it's much bigger than I thought, okay. It looked, it looked a lot smaller than that on a map. 1.9?
Yes, 1.9 square miles.
Square miles. And the city now is, what, about nearly 70 square miles?
It's right around 66 square miles, so this would increase it to right around 68 square miles.
All right. How much more in the way of annexations are we expecting going forward?
There still is a sphere of influence that is north of this area. However, it's owned by the county and the Airline Company. There's no anticipated annexation of that area at this time.
All right. I remember reading some time ago that the city was projected to go to, I thought it was 72 square miles. Am I just imagining that, or was that?
That area could include the sphere of influence. So the sphere of influence is north of this Area R, and that could very well be around 72 square miles.
All right. Well, thank you again for the presentation. Any questions? I'll recognize Councilmember Goh, who's got a question for you.
Will any of this annexed area be open to the public for, in terms of trails, open space, or possibly any future projects?
Yes, that is the idea. Once we annex the property, we would accept the irrevocable offer of dedication from the Airline Company, and once we do that, then we can look into having trails, and that would be, that would be something that we would look into at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, Councilmember Lou.
It's more common, and I'm glad that we're finally getting a site to get the joint training facility going. It's been a long time coming since 2019, so I'm happy to see that happening. That will enhance the public safety, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Councilmember Lou. Anything else? All right, I think this time we should ask if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard, comment publicly?
There are no requests to speak.
There being no requests, a motion would be in order. I'll be happy to move staff.
Second.
Recommendations, one and two. That motion by me is seconded by Councilmember, Councilmember Goh. Last call, any comments? There being none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Councilmember Goh?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Treseder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
Yes.
And Mayor Agren?
Yes.
Carrie Six Zero.
Thank you. That concludes Item 3.1. We now move to Item 3.2. Would the clerk please identify this item by subject and title?
Project Development Agreement and Lease with Almquist Development and Investment for the Canopy Retail Project.
Thank you, and I see staff came forward. At this time, I'd like staff to introduce themselves and proceed with their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Pete Carmichael, Assistant City Manager, and with me this evening is Steve Terrelli, Deputy Director of the Great Park. We're going to provide just a little bit of background on the project before you tonight, the Canopy Retail Project. Talk a little bit about the site and what's to come, and then the project development agreement and the lease, some of the terms of the deal itself. To start with, just a little bit of background, we, as you know, we conducted pretty extensive outreach into the community at the front end of the framework plan. That included a number of town halls, extensive meetings with the Great Park Residents Task Force, and we heard again and again, at the top of really most people's list that we talked to was the unmet need for retail in that part of the city, both from visitors to the park, which are nearly 6 million annually, and residents of the growing neighborhood who are having to travel to a crowded Woodbury Shopping Center, or even out of town to Lake Forest to get groceries and neighborhood essentials. Recognizing that need, in 2023, the council directed a competitive selection process, an RFQ, to identify a partner to look at ways to expand retail in the Great Park. Later that year, in early 2024, the council selected Almquist Development, directed council to move forward with an ENA and a consulting agreement to identify opportunities for retail, in large part because of the portfolio that Almquist has already built, both financially successful and really priding themselves on creating places with a soul, with a unique offering of food and beverage and small format retail. And that council direction back in 2023, '24, really launched the collaborative process that led to the Canopy. The Canopy is, the site plan is shown here. It's a part grocery-anchored retail center, offering staple services for the Great Park neighborhoods, as well as creative food and beverage offerings, small format retail, really built around some great open space or hangout space area, grass areas for picnics, for kids to play while parents and families are shopping and dining. And perhaps most importantly, it really creates a seamless park-like experience that blends with the Great Park next door. It's proposed to be built in two phases. The first phase is shown on the right side of the exhibit here. That's to be built on property owned by Almquist, and really a grocery-anchored center focused on serving the neighborhood. Phase two would be delivered through a leasehold on city property, which is the subject of the rest of tonight's discussion, and would be focused on food and beverage and more of a lifestyle center that really operates seamlessly with the adjacent Great Park. Phase two, which is focused here on the exhibit, is approximately 10 acres. It includes construction of three new buildings, as well as the reuse of two existing buildings. That's Hangar 10, which is a mirror image of Hangar 244, and right down the canopy, or excuse me, right down the taxiway from Hangar 10 is Hangar 244, its cousin building right on the other side. Also includes incorporation of the pop-ups, as they've come to be called, or the repurposed shipping containers on the bottom corner of the site that overlooks the park and the soccer stadium. Also includes a parking lot at the top part of the exhibit here that would serve the second phase of the Canopy, as well as extensive landscaped areas, fountains, entertaining space, outdoor seating and play areas. The project is structured similar to other projects that have come before the council on the Great Park Board. It comes in two parts. It's a project, or excuse me, a pre-development agreement and a lease, similar to Pretend City, OC Music and Dance, the museums at the Cultural Terrace West, as well as Great Park Ice, Wild Rivers. The PDA serves as a list of conditions, both city as lessor and the lesssee have to meet prior to execution of the lease. And then the lease is the document that governs the relationship between the two parties throughout the term. City responsibilities include preparing the site, grading utilities, and delivering pads, building the park with landscape common areas, as well as the parking lot and some of the structural work on Hangar 10. Almquist would then be responsible for building the three buildings, the vertical construction on those pads, any necessary tenant improvements, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment inside. During the life of the lease, Almquist would be responsible for programming, managing, leasing, operating, and maintaining the site and the adjacent parking lot. Terms of the lease are 30 years with three options for 10-year extensions. The city would bond for the construction at a cost of approximately $14 million, and then Almquist would pay for the principal and interest payments on that bond by way of an annual ground lease payment. Assuming a $14 million project cost, that's an annual rent payment of about $1.3 million based on current interest rates, and then rent would continue to the city after the bond is paid off. In addition to that base rent, there's also an opportunity for participation rent should the project be very successful, to the tune of $1750 in revenue per lease square foot. That's $1,750 in gross revenue per square foot. The city would then participate with Almquist. So to that extent, we sit on the same side of the table, both really motivated to see the project succeed to the extent possible. Almquist takes on leasing, operations, maintenance, annual maintenance of the entire site. Should that be park space, based on our per acre maintenance costs, that's about a $500,000 value annually to the city. Further, Almquist would be required to start construction 90 days after lease execution. So once the PDA conditions are met, lease is executed. Construction would need to start 90 days thereafter and be finished within 36 months. Estimated over the term of the lease, the city would earn just under $50 million after payment of debt service-related costs. If council directs that we move forward tonight, a couple of steps that would follow. First is fall, we would be back with the financing terms. That's a bond issuance that the city would prepare in conjunction with a bond underwriter and our Administrative Services Department. A full review of that would come back for city council consideration. And then winter '25, '26, we anticipate the PDA conditions being met for both the city and Almquist. The lease would be executed, and then the construction would commence on Phase 2 with a target opening for late 2026 or early 2027. With that, the recommendation before you is to approve and authorize the city manager to finalize the PDA and the form of lease with Almquist Development for the Canopy Retail Project. And with that, happy to take any questions you have.
Well, thank you for the presentation. This has been anxiously awaited by so many people in the Great Park area and those of us from afar who also want to see retail close to the Great Park and available to people in the northeast part of our city. Let me turn to my colleagues and ask if there are any questions or comments of staff regarding staff's presentation? Oh, there we are, Councilmember Goh.
Thank you, Mayor. Are you guys going to come back to us at a future date when you guys actually go through the financing process to bond it? And get, you know, we would approve it at that point as well?
We will, yeah, we anticipate being back in the fall with all the details around the financing.
Okay. So when that time comes, I'm assuming we're going to have a 30-year amortization. On the renewal period, are we then going to take the debt service? Since the debt's gone, we're going to take that in lieu of the rent at that time? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that will be spelled out, you know, when we come to the financing part of it?
Right, good. Councilmember Goh, I believe it's in the project development agreement. It is in the project development agreement, and it'll be spelled out again in the financing documents.
Okay. And I'm assuming all the default provisions will remain as well with the loan extinguished at that point?
They will.
Yeah, okay.
Others? Let me just say before we turn to the public. I've seen, as have my colleagues, of course, drawings, plans, renderings. I'm fond of saying, which is almost completely true, I've never met a rendering I didn't like. They're always so beautiful. I think this one is going to be a truly beautiful project, wonderful project, fitting as it does between the Great Park and serving the surrounding residential community as well. I think it's going to be amazingly successful, enjoyable. And apropos of our earlier discussion as part of the Great Park Board meeting, when we were talking about aerial tram gondola system, the whoosh system. This will be landing there, am I correct?
That's correct.
Well, that leads me to believe that, wow, it might really be possible for someone to come to the Great Park, buy car, park once, spend the whole day, buy what you need, even do some shopping, and then head home. Park once, enjoy the park, all the amenities, including all the supportive supplies that you need to have a great day at the park. We can't wait, okay. Anything further? All right, do we have any public comments who have requested to be heard?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Everything's calm out there. With that, is there a motion?
I'll move it. Mayor, move the item.
Councilmember Carol moves staff recommendation, which is to approve and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a project development agreement with Almquist Development and investment for the Canopy Retail Project. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Goh. Last, last chance for people to respond?
I'd like to say a couple of things.
Yes, Councilmember Goh.
So I've had the pleasure to visit the River Street Project that Almquist have done with other council members as well here. And if you guys have not seen it, I encourage you guys to visit as well so you can give us quite a bit of feedback on how like to look and feel in design. And I see, I see Dan up here. I'm sure he'll welcome any one of us visiting the project. So I worked with Dan in the last few days, kind of gave him my perspective as a Great Park resident, what we'd like to see there. And he's been receptive of, you know, all of our feedback so far, and he understands the challenges that we face as a community. And he understands the challenges that we face as a community. And he's excited about the opportunity as well. So together, we're going to be able to put forth, an amazing retail center moving forward. And we're really excited and looking forward to that. And looking forward to see when you guys come back with the full proposal as well.
Anything further? Let me, let me ask. When we were out there, I don't recall, and I don't recall seeing it in the plans, is there an area for performing artists, small bands and so forth, that could perform there and really ensure the liveliness of the entire area for shoppers and others?
Yes, there is. The corner of the site down closest to the soccer stadium includes a small, informal, live performance space. You know, grass at a slight grade and a small stage to really provide some additional energy to the site.
Excellent. I think, I think that will be well-used once we get it up and operational. Terrific. Last call for any comments on the motion. See no requests. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Gao.
Yes.
Councilmember Liu.
Yes.
Councilmember Trishider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
Mayor Agren.
Yes.
Carrie Six Zero.
Thank you both. Steve, next time, don't, don't talk so much. Just kidding.
He's got the next item.
All right. With that, we move on to 3.3. Would the clerk please identify this business item by subject and title?
License Agreement with County of Orange for Due Diligence of County 100-Acre Site.
Excellent. I take it we have the same two presenters, right? All right, good. Well, with that, go, go right ahead. Tell us what you have in mind.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, for your consideration tonight is a license agreement with Orange County. For a license agreement that would allow us to do some due diligence on something we affectionately refer to as the County 100 Site. So just a brief overview. Way back in 2004, when, when the base closed and when things were getting transferred to create the Great Park, the city annexed that former property and as part of the construction proceeding, the county was to receive 100 acres of the site that's south of Marine Way, adjacent to the railroad tracks, and then also two sites north of Irvine Boulevard that we affectionately refer to as the Dog Ears Parcel. In 2014, the county pursued a rather ambitious development plan on that site that obviously garnered quite a lot of attention from the city. And after quite a bit of discussion and lengthy dispute, that project was scrapped. And then coming into the last few years, we've re-engaged with the county on a real master planning opportunity where we can integrate what's happening on that county hand of acres into something that would be consistent with our Great Park vision. And it would be a wonderful development in that area. And so the first piece of that is to do due diligence on the site. We know a lot about the site because it was all contiguous with the military base. But we need to get out there, poke around, dig some holes, do some analysis, and then come back to the city council with the results of that and perhaps a recommendation to take some further action with the county. The goal, of course, is if everything checks out, we'd be back to you proposing some type of a lease arrangement where we could do a joint development on the site. So the site involves approximately 60 acres. Depending on how you cut it up, that, the license agreement is for one year and 45 days. Don't ask me about the term. That was in the county's document and we accepted it. It does not commit us to any further actions, but does allow us to get out there and do that initial analysis, geotechnical reviews, civil engineering analysis, environmental analysis, conceptual site planning. All those things that the team did to bring the Gateway Project to fruition, we'd be doing on this site. And with this one, because the county has also done some significant work on the site as far as intelligence gathering, we'll be getting all of that within 45 days of execution of this agreement should the council direct us to move forward. With that, the recommended action is before you, and that is to authorize the city manager to execute the license agreement as attached to the staff report between the city and County of Orange for that due diligent and pre-development agreement activities on the approximately 70-acre remaining site adjacent to the Great Park. And we're here for any questions you have.
Excellent. Before turning to my colleagues, let me ask, where are we on the BeWell facility?
The current BeWell facility is actually, the first phase of it, it's almost constructed. The BeWell entity that operates, the nonprofit is actually called MindOC. They're currently embroiled in some litigation with the County of Orange. And so the operational profile of the facility will likely transition as that litigation works its way through. That being said, the first phase of the project is almost complete at this point.
So I know this is a little bit tangential, but do you actually expect public services, beneficial services, to be delivered out of that building soon?
Short answer is yes. There's been a lot of time, energy, effort to get the facility really constructed and up and running. In terms of how the operations would work, there's still, I think, a little bit of lack of clarity given the dispute that's emerged between MindOC and the county. We're hopeful the dispute will get resolved in short order and we'll have a clear operating plan and what happens on the site moving forward.
All right. Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues now. Any questions of staff at this point? There being none. City Clerk Peterson, tell us, are there any requests from citizens to be heard?
We have one request to speak via Zoom.
Excellent. Please call on that person.
Thank you, Mayor. Our speaker is Jeremy. Jeremy, unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi there. Just a quick question. Is this location the same location as the proposed Metro Rail Yard? I know there was a Metro Rail Yard that was to be built on the county property potentially. And I know there is issues in litigation. Is that what is, is that where this site is? Or, I'm not sure. That's just a question. Thank you.
Well, let's see if we can get that question answered right now on the spot.
It is adjacent to that site, but it does not include that site.
It's adjacent to that site. Excellent.
And that is all, Mayor.
All right. There being no further public comments, a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion to move the item. Staff recommendation, Mayor.
Councilmember Carroll moves staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor and Councilmember Mai. Last call for any comments on the motion. There being, oh, there we are. Councilmember Gao.
As far as the license agreement, are we going down the path of kind of a partnership with the county or more of a fixed fee once we identify the uses of it?
We would come back to the council for review. One potential opportunity is a long-term ground lease with the county. So not so much partnership as more lessor-lesssee relationship that would allow us to do some, some planning and implementation. But that's part of what we're trying to figure out during this due diligence period. We'd bring that framework back for your review.
Do, do we have confidence as far as the county in working in good faith with us? I know there's, I've been asked, there's challenges with, if the rail yard does get built there, housing kind of becomes of a challenge. How far, how far we could put the housing from the rail yard, et cetera, if it were to happen?
In some respects, some of the initial planning we've done with the county has elicited, I think, some optimism from staff's perspective. We've talked to them about several types of land uses, including buffering adjacent to the rail yard to make sure that the remaining property can be maximized for a type of use that would be appropriate in the location. I do think at this point, it appears the county's interests and the city's are aligned in that the county is hoping to be able to redevelop the site for something more productive. The pathway to get there really does require the city's cooperation and partnership. And all the conversations we've had at the staff level to this point indicate that the arrangement that Pete and Steve described, some type of a ground lease arrangement where the city would serve as the master developer. We'd plan out the site, come up with the development options, review it with our city council first, also review it with the county to make sure there's concurrence with the type of projects we'd move forward. If we can reach that goal, it's certainly, I think, gonna, we'll have to do a lot of work to get there. But if we can reach that goal, then I think it could be mutually beneficial for everybody involved.
Can you confirm if this area would fall under Great Park or the general city?
It's technically not part of the Great Park. It's technically in the city, but it's Great Park adjacent.
So all items would go through the planning commission initially?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? See no requests at this time. The motion is properly before us. I'll call on the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Gao.
Yes.
Councilmember Liu.
Yes.
Councilmember Trishider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
Mayor Agren.
Yes.
Carrie Six Zero.
Thank you all. That allows us now to move on to item 3.4. Would the clerk please identify this item by subject and title?
Consider expanding the Irvine Connect Neighborhood Shuttle Program.
With this item now before us, we'll turn to city staff. I'm going to ask both of you gentlemen, please tilt your screen down so we can see your faces. Excellent, thank you. And proceed with your presentation, please. Identify yourselves and proceed with it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Luis Sastvez, Acting Director of Public Works. With me this evening is Mike Davis, our Transit Administrator. And we're here to provide you with a presentation on the proposed expansion of the Irvine Connect Shuttle. So by way of background, the city council approved the Irvine Connect Pilot Program back in September of 2023. And really, the purpose of this shuttle was to create a neighborhood service or a neighborhood transit service that really would connect residents to various service centers, retail centers, schools and parks. We've had over 141,000 boardings in the pilot's first year and daily boardings have doubled since the pilot's inception. As a matter of fact, on, just on April 10th of this year, we had our busiest day with 740 boardings on the existing route. Irvine Connect is now the third busiest transit route operating in the city today, which includes 15 other OCTA bus routes. And then finally, on February 11th of this year, council directed staff to explore the possible expansion of this service. So the current system is what we call the Yale-Barranca Route. It includes five buses in this service and it presently serves the Irvine Train Station, the Spectrum Center, both the Hoag and the Kaiser Hospitals, IVC, our senior center at Lakeview, several schools and community centers, of course, Irvine High School as well, Northwood Town Center. So as we initially sat down to develop an expansion of this system, we really wanted to think this through, have a thoughtful approach to how we develop and expand in network and what best, what are the best ways to reach as many residents and neighborhoods and points of interest throughout the community in an efficient way, working within the confines of the resources that we have available to us. And so these resources are primarily made up of Proposition 116 funds. These are transit funds going back to the, to the 1990s as part of the old Centerline project proposal, the now-defunct light rail system. The funding for that system was still active and made available to local cities to fund transit programs. These funds are controlled by OCTA, who budgets money every year for this program to reimburse the city for transit-related uses. Essentially, the, the main conditions of using these funds is that they're only spent on transit-related purposes and that they have to have some kind of a nexus to a mass transit system or a train system, train, a train station. Currently, we are using some of those funds on our iShuttle program, which is a small, smaller circulator system that really is focused on providing that last mile connection between our, our train stations. So as part of this proposal, well, part of that issue is that the, since COVID, since the pandemic, the ridership members on iShuttle have decreased significantly. And so our proposal would be to cancel the iShuttle service as of this June 30th, transfer those buses and funding to the iConnect, Irvine Connect system, which has proven to be quite popular. So the initial system that we proposed and that we considered was a three-route system, which would expand the existing Yale-Barranca route north. And then it would include what we're calling the Jamboree-UCI route, which generally runs along Jamboree and connects to the UCI area, and as well as a Barranca Link route, which essentially connects Yale-Barranca and Jamboree with that middle piece along Barranca. So the expanded Yale-Barranca route, the current route includes five buses working on 20-minute headways. The expanded route would add one additional bus. You'd have six buses total in service, operating on 20-minute service. This expanded route would include adding five additional stops and providing access to Northwood High School, the future Gateway Preserve, the Eastwood, Stonegate and the Groves neighborhoods. So in addition to that, we looked at creating, as I mentioned, the new Jamboree-UCI route. This would add two additional buses, operating on a 60-minute headway. And this would connect points of interest such as the marketplace, the Tustin Station, various IBC employment centers, the Diamond-Jamboree Shopping Center, several hotels, of course, John Wayne Airport, UCI Health, Irvine Hospital, as well as UCI itself, and the University Town Center. The new Barranca Link route, basically linking Yale-Barranca to Jamboree, would require one additional bus, operating also on a 60-minute headway. That would connect to a number of apartments and churches, a number of schools, a number of parks, of course, the Irvine Civic Center, and several key shopping centers as well. The, the cost for this expanded option, that is the Yale-Barranca route, operating on a 20-minute service, the Jamboree-UCI and Barranca Link, operating on 60-minute headways, over the course of 16 years, would cost an average each year of $8.8 million. The city has access to a maximum of $5.5 million on average per year in those 116 funds. And that would leave an annual cost that the city would have to cover of $3.3 million. Now, in addition to those routes, we also considered a fourth route, which we've called the, the potential Great Park Route. This would provide access to a number of schools throughout the community, including several community centers, Irvine High School, some shopping centers, and also the Tustin Station and the Irvine Station. So taken in totality, if we had unlimited resources to work with, the entire network based on 20-minute headways versus no 60-minute, but just all 20-minute headways on all four routes, you would have a total of 19 buses in service. We would have to add 75 additional stops. The cost of that, over the course of 16 years, is about $256 million. We have about 88, or just north of $88 million in Prop 116 funds that we would be able to use towards that cost, which essentially would break down to a cost to the city of about $10.5 million over the course of 16 years. This table here provides a breakdown of those different route options and kind of provides a menu of, of options. The least expensive option, of course, is just expanding the current route, the current Yale-Barranca route, leaving that at 20-minute headways. It's an annual cost to run that at $7.9 million. And when you apply the maximum allowable funds under that scenario of 116 funds, it's about a $497,000 commitment to the city. Adding the additional routes, you see the costs jump up significantly, more than doubling. By adding the Jamboree-UCI and the Barranca Link routes, that would boost the cost of the system to over $11 million a year and would result in about a $5.8 million commitment to the city. to the city. There's a couple of other options as well with these scenarios. You could add the additional routes, put them in at 60-minute headways, and the annual cost to the city increases slightly to about $5.9 million a year. And then, of course, the full package, all four routes, all operating on 20-minute headways, that costs increase is or increases to 10.5, so it almost doubles to $10.5 million per year. The team did look at a 10-year program alternative. Rather than limiting the Prop 116 money over an annual basis spread out over 16 years, we looked at a potential option that would allow us to bond for those funds now, providing an initial tranche of money in the amount of $32.2 million that we could use towards the entire system. The costs that we've identified are laid out here, and it does, this particular program, this particular option does leave a funding allocation need of about $8.8 million a year from the city. And of course, we are evaluating options of how to secure funding for that gap as well as the other gaps as well. This table here provides a quick snapshot of that 10-year program. So depending on what options are selected, what routes are selected, and services or service times, that generally will make the cost vary pretty fairly wildly. It should be noted that on the 60-minute headways that I noted previously, those are for 14 total trips a day. So it would be operating on an hourly basis with 14 trips through every 24-hour period. We have one option here noted as a, it's called, it's noted as a seven trip. It would be seven hours daily, so we would cut the number of hourly trips by half and make the, make those routes available seven hours out of the day. That would be the least expensive option and costing the city about $3.5 million a year. This program, expansion program, was presented to the Transportation Commission on April 15. They had a robust discussion and debate over the various options presented to them, and they unanimously voted to recommend to the city council that it adopt the recommended actions, which would be to move forward with expanding the existing Irvine Connect Route and then adding additional routes in the future, so long as the city could afford to provide 20-minute headways. They did say that the 60-minute headways would most likely not work in the long term because it's obviously less convenient for the, for the community's benefit. For this evening, the recommended actions before the council this evening, we are recommending to continue, obviously, the Irvine Connect program or the Irvine Connect Route, which was initially set up as a pilot, and that would allow us to continue this route through the end of this current fiscal year and then expand it north to run along Portola, as we showed, starting in July of this year. As well as direct staff to assess and develop a budgetary plan to facilitate the addition of two new Irvine Connect Routes. That would include the Jamboree UCI Route and the Baranca Link Route for implementation sometime in fiscal year 2526. It would also direct staff to establish a capital improvement project for construction of additional 25 Irvine Connect bus stops, and of course, extend or execute an amended contract with our current bus operator for those expanded bus routes. Of course, discontinue the three iShuttle Routes by June of this year and transfer those buses and 116 funding to the Irvine Connect Program. And then direct staff that, over the course of the next year, assess the viability of instituting a fourth Irvine Connect Route to link the Great Park area with the proposed expanded Irvine Connect System. And then, of course, including the viability of bonding against those funds to provide that funding upfront and allow us to expand the system sooner. And that concludes my presentation, and Mike and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for a very important and comprehensive presentation. Before turning to my colleagues, I'll be happy to open it up by asking a couple of things, maybe commenting a little bit as well. First of all, just to underscore a point that was made by our city manager when we were talking about the Great Park, Swift City's Wush system. What we're talking about here is a citywide system. What we were talking about in connection with the Great Park was, I don't want to diminish it, but it was a customized boutique system to really serve the park and the park area, serve the park internally. I don't want people getting confused. It's not one or the other. As the city manager indicated, it's a question of both. So let me ask you. This Irvine Connect system, that would be a Jamboree and a UCI Route, would that be interconnecting with the Anteater System? Or is this presuming we're on our own?
That's an excellent question, Mayor. Thank you for that. We have had conversations with UCI about the potential for their riders on the Anteater and our riders on Irvine Connect to be able to use both services interchangeably. They have, and there's a few issues that they need to work through because technically speaking, the Anteater is paid for by students and typically used for, reserved for the use by students and faculty and staff. But they do see a really good opportunity there to allow that interconnection, that interoperability. In fact, we identified a great spot near the campus that's sort of a mini mobility hub where you have Anteater, Irvine Connect, and OCTA bus stops all kind of converging in the same location. So there is a benefit to that. They recognize that as well.
It would allow us to bring the costs to us down if we were in a cooperative arrangement with them, obviously. All right. Let me just say flat out, what seems to be working now is the fact that the Irvine Connect System up and operational now is free, and it has 20-minute headways. That seems to be the sweet spot on all of this. I'd be very hesitant to see us depart from the 20-minute headways. Just about anybody can wait up to 20 minutes for a bus, but an hour headway, no. That requires a whole different kind of person. Okay. Let me say, whatever we decide upon, we are, of course, going forward with the Irvine Connect this summer and beyond. I think it's imperative that we have a really robust marketing program for the existing program and anything we add on. What we're really doing is, I think, cashing in on the opportunity to have an entirely different culture of individuals, younger people who get used to in their younger years using the Irvine Connect System, obviously, senior citizens as well. They got to know it, about it. Once they try it, I think a big percentage of them are going to be hooked, and properly so. They can also explain, and I think as part of the marketing, you should say, you know, really appropriate use of the Irvine Connect System can allow an entire household to eliminate one automobile, an added automobile. They can save themselves $5,000 to $10,000 a year by downsizing to one less automobile. This has so many beneficial implications, of course, on our climate action and everything else. I hope that's a part of the calculation here, by the way, how we reduce vehicle miles traveled and change the culture and everything else. All right. Let me just say, coming back to the Anteater matter, Chancellor Gilman, who hosted a lovely breakfast for the entire city council just a few days ago, I had the opportunity to be sitting next to him and ask of him privately and then with the group as well, what are the chances of our cooperating, linking up with the free Anteater System so that we can have a citywide system and better serve, obviously, the university part of our community as well? And his response was not specific, but it was very positive, said to the effect of, I think I can get our people on that right away. So I would pursue that early on. All of this is to say, I've overrun my time here, all of this is to say that I think we're on our way with a terrific vision for a transit system overcoming the one principal shortcoming from the very beginning in the city, which is, we didn't put transit first. I've spoken enough. Other council members have questions of staff, or should we turn to public comment? I think we'll turn to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have 10 requests, or excuse me, 11 requests to speak. Three are in person and the restaurant Zoom.
We have 11 speakers?
Correct.
How many are here?
Three.
Three here. All right. Let's, let's allow two to, two to three minutes. Let's say two minutes. And if those individuals who are using two minutes need just a little more time, we'll happily grant it to them, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call forward Susan Sayer, Doug Elliott, and Youssef Kadesh, and we'll start with Susan Sayer.
Welcome, Susan.
Hi. Well, my name's Susan Sayer, and I'm an Irvine resident. I live at Regent's Point Senior Community, and as you know, our administrators and my fellow residents and I have worked hard to meet and communicate with city staff to present our need for expansion of the Irvine Connect. Your proposed route plan includes multiple interconnecting routes, which appears to make it difficult and time-consuming to access the destinations we want and need. I had a conference call with Mike Davis and Luis Estvez from the Transportation Department, who explained that there is not enough funding to provide a Culver route to take us down to Lakeview Senior Center and allow us to transfer to the existing Irvine Connect route. The proposed multiple routes were discussed, and transportation plan for our residents could necessitate multiple route transfers in order to access our desired destinations. However, none of the routes will give us access to Rancho Senior Center or the University Park Library. The plan is to require, hopefully, the plan will be to require most routes to have 20-minute bus frequencies rather than an hour, and have the Saturday and Sunday transportation hours extended to about 11:00 PM, which would allow us, Regent Point residents, to attend Barclay Theater and Swan Theater performances on weekends. The purpose for Irvine Connect should be more than taking cars off the road and supporting students. The goal should also include meeting the needs of seniors, members of the disabled community, those who do not drive, and business customers and employees by giving them access to local businesses, grocery stores, pharmacies, post offices, shopping centers, to the Irvine Valley College, and which will pay, play an increasingly significant role in Irvine's health and wellness programs. I therefore suggest that the proposed routes be amended to include Culver and Jeffrey to allow residents and employees to access Irvine Shopping Centers along those streets and to access Irvine Valley College, which the proposed routes do not provide access to the stores, by the way, and post offices.
Thank you for your comments tonight and for your continuing advocacy. It's making a difference. Thank you.
Doug Elliott?
Welcome, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Again, I'm Doug Elliott, a member of the Community Services Commission, soon to have a name change, and still speaking for myself. I am a fan of Irvine Connect. I was on board, I think, on its, the first day of operation and was very impressed with it. Unfortunately, I have kind of a last mile problem where I live. It's not far from here, actually, but a little too far to walk up around Paseo, West Park, and Warner. So that also is a pretty, pretty good hike to the closest iConnect stop, Irvine Connect stop personally. Now, this proposed Baranca extension would be a real game changer for me. I could not only get to the existing route with a transfer, but I'd be able to take the bus to City Hall, which would be wonderful, and a lot of other places I go, you know. And with the Jamboree Route, I'd basically be able to leave my car at home for most of the places I go. But that depends on the frequency of service, 60 minutes. I agree, Mayor, is not going to cut it. So it needs to be every 20 minutes. That said, I'm very sympathetic to the concerns that Susan raised tonight and in the past, and hope that those can be accommodated with some minor adjustments. I look forward to hearing from Commissioner Kadesh. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Youssef Kadesh?
Welcome, Youssef.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Yeah, I'm very excited about the expansion of Irvine Connect. I just wanted to come and say thank you for your continued support for it. And I also just wanted to highlight the 20-minute frequency is what's, is what makes Irvine Connect successful, on top of it, being free, just like you said. So, and I also just wanted to say very quickly that, you know, I would advocate to be more willing to spend outside of the 116 funding. I mean, I don't know why we have to limit ourselves just to that. It's very, very normal for cities to spend a certain percent of, percentage of its budget on transit, and, you know, it's a question of how much. I mean, that's something you guys can decide, but I just hope that, you know, why are we only limiting ourselves to 116 funding when we could get more coverage in other parts of the city? And really, I mean, this is not frivolous city amenities. This is something that really does change people's lives, takes cars off the road, it reduces congestion and all the things we're trying to achieve. So anyway, I don't want to take too much time, but I want to thank you for your support and have a good night. Yeah.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is James. James, you may unmute your mic.
Good evening, members of the city council. I'm James from Woodbridge. Irvine Connect's first route has been a major success. It's become a regular part of how I get around and an indispensable service to many in the community. The biggest ask from others has been to expand it to their community, and the routes presented here today are fantastic. West Park, IBC, John Wayne, UCI, Heritage Plaza, Irvine High, Woodbury, Great Park, and more can all be part of a great connected network. These are big trip generators. This is a vision for Irvine to have a clean transportation network that also reduces traffic. And the key to the success of the initial Yale Baranca Route has been that 20-minute frequency. It means a bus is never too far away and can fit many different schedules. Any longer and the wait time makes using the bus unrealistic for many trips. Hourly frequency fails to deliver on Irvine Connect's core strength. Irvine has the city budget to support 20-minute frequencies, and other comparable cities such as Culver City spend up to 10% of their budget on transit, as it is an essential city service. This is not unusual at all. Irvine can do the same and does not have to rely solely on 116 funds. I strongly urge the city council to fund as many routes as possible at 20-minute frequencies to help Irvine Connect become a success for the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is John Brock. John, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, my name is John Brock. I'm a resident of Irvine. I just want to say how excited I am to see these new proposed routes. And I want to give a really big thank you to everyone in the city staff who put so much work into this. This is really great. However, I will echo the mayor's comments and the comments from other speakers that a frequency of only one bus per hour is really way too low. You know, if I'm trying to decide whether I want to take the bus or drive, a bus just isn't going to compete if it's only running once per hour. So. So I want to really encourage the City Council to spend money to really set these new routes up for success, you know, even if we have to spend money beyond what OCTA is providing. You know, we're spending tens of millions of dollars a year on projects like widening our roads, which, you know, doesn't make it dent in traffic, it doesn't improve quality of life. The least we can do is start spending our money on more transit. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Jeremy. Jeremy, you may unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi there. Jeremy Ficcarola. I'm a Cypress Village resident in District 2. And I, first, I want to thank the staff and City Council for continued support of I-Connect Shuttle. I think it's a great, great service. It is game-changing. My, so my biggest qualm is that here in District 2, you know, Great Park, Woodbury, Stonegate, Portola Springs, Alter, we seem to be kind of on the short end of the stick. And I'm really, really hoping my council member will advocate for District 2. This is actually exactly the moment when District, moving to District elections, when a council member of a district can really advocate for their constituents. And I see Route 4, which is the, or I think it's 3 or 4, which seems to be like the last choice, sort of like the one that you would cut out first because of expenses, is the one that goes through Great Park and different areas in District 2. And I know I would greatly, I mean, I would personally use it all the time. Great Park is expanding. There's many, I mean, it's a big portion of Irvine, and it looks like it's kind of left out. And I'm just really, I'd be very, very disappointed if, you know, City Council did not include the Great Park route, which I forget which route that is, but any iteration of Great Park and, you know, District 2 being left out, I would be greatly disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nishika. Nishika, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Nishka, and I recently moved to Woodbridge. I want to first say I'm extremely proud to live in a suburban city that has its own bus route, that is free, and that aims to connect the city. And I would love nothing more than to see it expanded as much as possible. The plans outlined today are extremely exciting. I'd like to echo the previous comments made and really urge the council to stick to 20-minute frequency for all routes, including the proposed new ones. I'm a transplant from New York City and very deeply understand the value and necessity of high-frequency public transit. As a taxpayer, I'd be very happy to see more funds allocated to increasing the bus frequency across new routes and providing more adequate options for residents to get around Irvine without a car. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Harvey Bessa. Harvey, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, I'm Harvey Bessa, resident of Irvine since 1976. I'm curious what the criteria are for selecting each section of a route. There seem to be long, straight sections rather than taking small detours to pick up things like a nearby shopping center. However, I heard mentioned that we would be going to Heritage Plaza, and of course, the Woodbridge Center Plaza across Culver, but I joined in too late to see the map. It would also be nice to go to the district, but that's in Tustin, so would that permanently kill that possibility? And lastly, Doug Elliott's comment about missing the last mile, or maybe the last any distance, would encourage walking and even carrying bags that would give health-giving life to lots of people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. How many more do we have?
We have three more.
Three more. Go right ahead.
Our next speaker is Dane Kirstens. Dane, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, yeah, I'm a Woodbridge resident, and I just want to say that I-Connect absolutely needs to be supported. The city has turned out and supported it. Ridership has been up continuously over the last year, month over month. The City Council supported it. Guys just voted 5-0 to renew it. The Transportation Commission supports it. Specifically, they support it with the caveat of 20-minute frequencies, the thing that will turn this service from, well, I guess it exists, to something actually great. This is a chance to be building something for the city, something that you can put your name on, something that will exist for, hopefully, decades to come. Now, do you want that thing to, let's be honest, kind of suck, which is what hourly frequencies would be, that's waiting an entire episode of Friends with commercials and knowing you have an entire episode waiting for you before your bus gets here? That's not acceptable. Please build a network that works and make it 20-minute headways. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Spencer Lynch. Spencer, you may unmute your mic.
Hello, members of the Irvine City Council. My name is Spencer Lynch. I'm an urban planning student at UC Irvine. I would strongly urge you all to support the expansion of the Irvine Connect system. The current Okta service serving Irvine is extremely lacking, especially on weekends, especially given the city's size, being one of the largest cities in Orange County, both population and land-wise. The 20-minute frequencies that Irvine Connect currently has are really what make the system great and extremely popular and extremely beneficial to myself, other UCI students, and, you know, seniors, people with disabilities, and, you know, anyone else that wants to use it because it's a wonderful system. It's also great to connect to Tustin and Irvine, Metrolink, and Amtrak stations, and the new proposed route to John Wayne Airport, which I guess along with Tustin, would be amazing, especially for those of us that live in the University Park area. This service would be great. It would help reduce cars on the road, and of course, help the city meet their sustainability goals and really just make Irvine a better place. I really hope you would support this expansion with 20-minute frequencies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sylvia Walker. Ms. Walker, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, this is Sylvia Walker, Irvine resident. I just wanted to give my support to expanding Irvine Connect, I-Connect in any way possible and keep it to no more than 20-minute waits, otherwise it won't be that appealing to people to use. I, the current route wouldn't really accommodate me because I'm off of Irvine Boulevard, just a little above the Great Park, and I know everybody has their own desire of how to expand this. I hope the Great Park and the general area will be considered at some point, but for right now, I support any kind of expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Thank you to the commenters. At this time, a motion would probably be in order unless, oh, there we go. Councilmember and Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this has been a great exercise here. You know, I was one of the votes here to continue, connect, and explore the options of expanding here. I'm glad we got the numbers. I read a lot of this, and thank you for considering the seniors and children at the structures and the benches. Hopefully, that can get ridership up. That's been a big complaint from a lot of the residents along the existing routes, where they can't have a place to sit, or, you know, with the summer coming up, where are they going to stand in the sun for 20 minutes? One of the things that is really alarming to me is the cost here. And if we had unlimited funds, we could do great things, but we don't have unlimited funds. I think we need to get ridership up before anything else. I think we're kind of just jumping ahead here and talking about the expansion that costs, I mean, millions and millions. I mean, this is huge here, even when we filter down the shuttle here. I mean, we currently have five buses, but what is the current ridership again? Can you talk to that? I don't have that number on my mind.
Yeah, we've been averaging, in the last few months, nearly eight boardings an hour. We have gone beyond that in a number of days, and the biggest ridership we've had to date was just on April 10th with 740 boardings that day, which is almost 11 boardings per hour.
Okay. In this report here, I don't see any sort of marketing campaign or any sort of ways to get ridership up. Was that in something to consider, or is that something you guys have been considering as well? Can you address that?
Certainly. We've been, our comms and engagement team has been working on developing enhanced marketing. I think that's been helpful in seeing ridership levels increase. At the outset of Irvine Connect, we were averaging about three boardings per hour. At this point, we're up to seven to eight boardings an hour. Typically, a transit route that's functioning well needs to hit about 10 boardings per hour. And so we have seen growth over the last year in ridership on the existing route. The marketing certainly could be improved, and we have a plan that we've been deploying the last couple of months as Irvine Connect got more mature. We've done some marketing in partnership with Spectrum, and we're certainly going to continue to look for ways to encourage folks to ride the existing bus system.
Great as usual. Thank you. So the current cost is about $8 million, and we're looking at full build-out at $168 million total city cost. I mean, it's a lot of money, you know, in expansion like that. I, you know, I want to also say, you know, I understand the public comments here and the effort we have to, you know, with public transit, but has any, I've heard from a lot of people, but I haven't heard from a majority of the people out there. I haven't heard from families that have three, four kids. I haven't heard from anyone else. I've just heard from a small number of people. And for us to spend this much money, I think we need to consider other people as well. I don't think there's any outreach to the general public to get their feedback on this. Unless I'm wrong, I mean, I could be wrong. Has there been any surveying or talking to families out there?
No, we haven't done any survey work on the system. We've really been tracking ridership ultimately. To the point raised regarding budget, if the council would indulge the staff, we'd maybe provide a little context and maybe address some of the comments that we heard. We heard some comments as it relates to why did staff select these routes and why were you viewing these routes? Why were it prioritized the way that we prioritized with certain routes at 60-minute headways? First, if we go back to the beginning, all of the routes were assessed, studied, developed through a comprehensive transit study, the Transit Vision Plan. That laid out the framework of the routes that we should contemplate as funding became available. It's important that-
Oh, that's great. That's great, City Manager. I just was, I just wanted to know if the public was informed or gave feedback, or if there was a survey where we went from, and if they're comfortable with us going from $8 million to $160 million more-
Right.
-without the government, without citizens' feedback, just of a few, or with studies about the routes. I mean, that's not an issue to me about the routes. What is an issue to me is that people in general, community, families have not been contacted, but we're going to increase, and we're talking about spending $160 million more dollars without fully surveying Irvine. But you answered my question, which we didn't yet.
We haven't, and the initial proposed route structure with the headways really was identified as an additional cost factor that would cost the city somewhere around $3, $3.5 million a year more in costs above what we've currently budgeted. That's why you've seen the staff recommendation being, tonight, I think we're trying to get some feedback from the City Council on preferences related to headways, routes. And the real recommendation is direction for us then to take that feedback, put together a budgetary plan for consideration. I heard some comments from the public tonight, why can't we allocate more money towards the program? We certainly can, budgeting is about priorities. Where do we want to allocate our resources towards? The, there are some cities that have their own transit authorities. Culver City, for example, has their own transit authority where they draw additional funding. I heard that mentioned earlier tonight. One of the things that I think folks need to understand is the scale of how much things cost to operate as-is. On an annual basis, Carl's Department, the City Clerk's Office, one of the smallest departments in the city, that costs us roughly $3.5 million a year to run right now. That's the cost to run the Clerk's Office annually. The Community Development Department costs about $16 million a year to run that entire department. When we're talking about the dollars in sense of why can't we allocate more, the question is, and the answer isn't that we can't, the answer is, we've never had a transit program in Irvine that the city funded. And so we're been taking steps to look at restricted dollars initially to fund an initial launch, and we're looking to grow the program in a way that we can afford and do so in a responsible manner. The parameters of what that system should look like, the transit system, we'd love to get some feedback from the council tonight on headways, route preferences, and we can take all that back and then assess, how do we match that up with our available resources moving ahead? But the scale of what suggested, 20-minute headways across all four of the different routes that we've looked at, would cost the city $16 million a year. About $5 million of that a year could be covered by 116 funds. That leaves a gap of $10 million a year, and we don't have a funding plan that can sustain that type of support at this moment unless there are operational cuts to the existing operation or new revenues found, which is why we've looked at a scaled approach. Is there a way to step into an expansion? And direction to staff to look for additional resources so that we can expand the system over time. But hopefully, that provides a little context. Certainly, I think the service is terrific. How we match up resources to fund the service, I think, is the next step in our efforts to expand public transit in Irvine.
Thank you. My preference is no operational cuts to fund this, for one, and my preference also is to get feedback from the public at large. And I'm glad that you brought up Culver City, because I actually did research Culver City, their public transit rates, just for comparison. I was wondering also if we're able to do something similar to that versus a free model. I mean, for first, the standard rate in Culver City is the $1. Students, $0.75. Seniors are $0.35. Blind passengers are free. Also, there are discounts and free rideshare programs for schools within the district there as well. So maybe that's something we should consider as well. But thank you for clarifying some of my questions here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Mai, Councilmember Carroll.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just thought, I'm going to be voting no on this. I kind of tend to agree with some of the other comments. I think the staff did a wonderful job on this. I think that, you know, I would just say to my colleagues, who I need to try to bring over to my side, this isn't my saying that the current program is, this isn't my expression that the current program isn't doing what it's doing. It's just, in my opinion, I feel like we need to see how everything's going, run the program through, let it play out, and maybe come back in, maybe perhaps this fall, see how the summer goes. It's actually encouraging to hear from staff that we've had some, it sounds like we had one very robust ridership day, and maybe it was just one, and the other one seemed pretty anemic. We did hear from, you know, what City Manager Chi referred to as, quote-unquote, "the public" tonight. We have 318,000 residents in the city. We heard from people that spoke as part of public comment, and I think virtually all of them were mass transit advocates, and that's great. And I listen very closely to what they say. I have a good relationship, but then we may not agree on everything. But they were mass transit organizations, or not necessarily organizations, but certainly strong, strong advocates. Less roads kind of advocates, road diet advocates, that kind of, the same people that gave us CECLR Irvine, the same people that, you know, they would prefer less cars. And that's fine, that's a position. I just, I don't- I just, I don't hold that position. I try to think about what the position is of everyone on my street. I happen to live in a single-family home. I used to rent at some point. I have a lot of friends that rent in Irvine. And thinking about what those families are doing, and right now, they're probably doing what's happening at my house, working on Algebra I, working on maybe pre-algebra in eighth grade or something like that. They're not here. They're not calling into the city. They're not availing themselves of the Zoom, which, again, as we heard tonight, is completely optional. And most cities in the county of Orange doesn't even have that. You physically come here and speak. I like the accessibility of the Zoom, but what we have is people that were able to call and be transit advocates that were organized for a transit, you know, advocate agenda item. So I'm not against the Irvine Connect. I am against the massive expansion of it. I think massive is probably close to the right word because it's expanding by, at least exponentially, as the staff report reflects. And we do have, I appreciate City Manager's point on transit agencies. We have this thing called the Orange County Transit Agency. We're all paying many, many dollars, certainly of Irvine, into tax. I sit on that board proudly of the Orange County Transportation Agency. And those monies come back to Irvine. So I'm pretty comfortable with what we do now. I would ask my colleagues, just urge them to perhaps revisit this in a few months before we engage in a parabolic expansion of a program. And again, just think about the entire master plan and the entire fabric and the framework of all our residents and, you know, and, you know, whether this is a system we need when we currently have Orange County Transit Authority buses and we currently have, I wouldn't even call it embryonic. We have a pretty good base system in place right now. So again, this is not against the staff. This is just my view, trying to, you know, give my opinion. And, you know, I'm fortunate enough to have been elected to give a vote. So my vote is, right now, no. But it's a no means against what we're doing right now. I just want to make that clear. And I hope that we could get to a point where we could maybe pause it. We'll see what the rest of this council wants to do and maybe come back in the fall. But thank you. And thank you, staff. And appreciate your guys' efforts on this stuff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Before calling upon Councilmember Treceder next and then Councilmember Lou, I think what I'd like to do is put the motion in front of us and then have people try to speak to the motion. Because there's nothing in this motion that says we're committing to a far-flung transit system with this vote. Looks to me like it's budget for things, study this, book into this particular thing and so forth. Accordingly, what I'd like to do is, just at this moment, move adoption of staff recommended actions, one through five.
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember Treceder. And rather than calling upon myself to talk at greater length in support of the motion, turn now to Councilmember Treceder and then Councilmember Lou. Councilmember Treceder.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very enthusiastic about this proposal. It's such a great way to help our residents. Our residents expect us to invest their tax money wisely. A lot of them that we've heard from have really enjoyed this route. It includes mothers of small children who have written emails, I think, to all of us saying that they really enjoy it. They like bringing their kids on the shuttle. They really like taking them to the Spectrum. Of course, students and folks, I mean, just lots of folks who would just prefer to ride rather than drive. $3 million a year from the city is really not that much in terms of our general fund. There, as Mr. Chi pointed out, there are many other expenses that we have that are much bigger that are well-established and that the public likewise enjoys. I do want to point out that the eight boardings an hour is per shuttle? Yes? Not for the whole route?
That would be, I'm thinking through all of that. It comes to that total per hour. And there, yeah, there are, there's a total of, I have to think about this, total of, I believe, 70 hours a day. So that's why, yeah, 740 boardings comes to 11. So, yeah, you could kind of say it's by the shuttle, I suppose, but it's.
I think it's well-used and it's continuing to increase. It's already our third most-used route in the city. The public would like us to expand it. I really appreciate Ms. Sayer's advocacy relentless to make sure that the folks in her area have access to transit. Many of them are not able to drive or do not wish to drive. I just think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to improve our traffic, take cars off the road, help our public and for very little money. I mean, you could say, well, I don't know why we're talking about funding it for 16 years right now. I don't think we would do that. We have to pay like the whole thing upfront for 16 years or?
The 16-year limit is tied to the amount of time we receive $116, which runs through 2041. The repayment schedule ramps over time. So we've tried to simplify it to an average cost per year. The 16-year time limit really is geared towards the base funding amount, the main funding source that we've identified for Irvine Connect.
Yeah, so we're not committing that much money per year. It's 3.35 million per year. I think that's very reasonable. So very happy to support this. Really hope it goes through. I'm excited to see our public use it. And I'm excited to hear from them about how much they're going to enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Treceder. Councilmember Lou.
Thank you. Well, thank you for doing all the work. And I also think this is a great idea to expand it. And we're not asking for massive expansion for routes that are not as frequently used as what the study had shown. So I think a progressive expansion sounds like a great idea in consideration of how we're just building this out right now. And like what Mayor had mentioned, that we are, we're changing the culture essentially. The young kids are more likely to take public transportation. And I would also echo the comment that had been said before that this really has been something that is able to help people change lives and help seniors who are not able to get to where they are. I agree that $3 million is really not a big investment in a city our size and considering our budget. And like what City Manager had already mentioned, how we budget is really how we show priority on what we're trying to do. So I think this wouldn't be a bad idea to have the expansion to serve students who have been advocating. And also, thank you to Ms. Sayer for coming to advocate for residents of Regions Point because your neighbors are probably not likely to be able to come to City Hall to advocate for themselves. So I am happy to see that we're able to provide more services. And if we are able to find more funding sources, I would like to see a bigger expansion in the future. But right now, I think this is not a terrible idea to expand what we have and bring more services to the residents. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lou. Councilmember Goh, I don't think I've called on you yet, have I? Why don't I call on you first and then we'll come back to Councilmember Mai.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to address the caller on District 2. I'm looking at this more of a functional standpoint. I'm more inclined, and I'm sure most other people too, inclined to take public transportation to destinations where there is no parking. And one of those destinations in Irvine is the Spectrum. So rather than seeing one straight line that goes from one end of the city to the other, I'd like to see a route that's more in line with the patterns of the commuters. I think a lot of the residents in my district would be happy to take a public transportation option to go to the Spectrum as well as the train stations. So that's kind of like my feedback. Minimizing cost is a concern, you know. Unfortunately, Irvine is not a dense city like a lot of other places in, you know, other parts of the world, LA. So it's fairly difficult to make public transportation work without the density. So more of a phased approach in terms of expanding it probably makes more sense. I'm not opposed to the expansion. I just want to make sure that, you know, we use the dollars wisely and really fighting for our district to have options as well in terms of getting to the places we'd like to get to for our residents there.
All right. Before calling on you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Mai, can I make a couple of comments now?
Absolutely.
Actually, it's questions. I want people to be really clear about the motion. And I want to be clear about it. Action item number one is to continue the Irvine Connect-Yale-Baranca route through fiscal year 2425 and expand it north to run along Portola starting in July 2025. if there's a no vote on this, that's kind of a compound action item. If there's a no vote, does that mean we're discontinuing the Irvine Connect system that exists now?
Excuse me. The current Irvine Connect program was identified as a pilot program. So we have authorization to run it for the current year. July targets the next year. And so if the council chooses not to move forward with the existing program, that's a long way to get to, yes. If we don't approve action item one, we wouldn't be continuing the pilot program.
It will die. We don't want it to die. So that's action item one. Action item two is directing that staff assess and develop a budgetary plan to facilitate the addition of two new Irvine Connect routes to include a Jamboree-UCI route and a Baranca-Link route that would connect the expanded Yale-Baranca route with the Jamboree-UCI route for implementation in fiscal year 2526. The essential part of this is to develop a budgetary plan. Well, of course, we ought to develop a plan. That doesn't mean we necessarily have to implement it, correct? So if somebody votes yes on this, it's to develop a plan. It's not to actually implement the plan. And you would come back to us and we'd talk about the plan if this were to pass. Now, the third one is direct the establishment of a capital improvement project for construction of additional 25 Irvine Connect bus stops and execute a contract with the bus operator for the expanded new routes and so forth. All right. That involves some serious costs that are dependent upon whether or not we're going ahead with one and two. So voting yes on this doesn't mean we get out there and start cutting up concrete immediately. Am I correct?
You'd be correct. We would identify sort of the overall capital plan, which would be dependent on the routes that we add.
Okay. And the discontinuance of the 3-I Shuttle routes, by the way, those were at one time quite successful. It got killed off largely by COVID and has never really recovered. But we recover money by discontinuing those routes. And what happens? If we don't vote yes on this motion, those routes stay in place. Is that correct?
Correct. For the moment, I Shuttle routes would continue to operate.
Yeah. Well, we don't want that. Okay. And then finally, direct that you assess the viability of instituting a fourth Irvine Connect route, blah, 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 that would go to the Great Park area. We're just asking you to look into the viability of it. So it seems to me this is a thoughtful course of action that we should vote yes on. I have a lot more to say. Somehow, people think that it's a smart economical move not to institute transit, not to expand transit, instead have people rely even more on their private automobiles, subjecting the community to more congestion, more pollution. The roads that we move all these cars on are so expensive beyond belief in that we aren't using those roads more effectively with transit rubber-tire vehicles that can reduce vehicle miles traveled in the city. In my view, it's a bargain. And as far as future funding, I'll tell you, OCTA is going to be coming up with another M program. I guess this will be M3, won't it, Mr. Representative? All right. They're going to be asking Irvine to get behind this great big M3 program. And my response to that is, you bet, provided you put a hefty amount of money in there so that we can continue to fund a comprehensive transit system in the city of Irvine that really makes a difference in our quality of life. So there's going to be plenty of money coming along in the future. And to, well, I won't go on. I'll get off the soapbox. I'll call on Mr. Mai at this point. Councilmember Mai.
Thank you, Mayor. Great points. I want to offer up a compromise here. And, well, I'd like to propose an amendment, send out a survey to Irvine residents to determine if they would ride the buses if available. I don't think that's too much to ask. That's a suggestion. I'd like to propose that amendment.
It's been moved that there be a survey conducted to determine whether people would use the system, ride the system. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Point of clarification is that we have a motion on board. So I'm happy, I think I was the second or I'm happy to accept the amendment.
As part of the original motion, is that the idea?
Yeah.
In other words, that be an action item in connection with all of this? Is that what you intended?
Yeah.
All right. The motion, can we have it restated more artfully than I did?
Mayor, I believe where you are right now is, you made the motion for the five items that are on the screen right now, but seconded by Councilmember Treceder. Vice Mayor Mai requested a friendly amendment from the maker and the second that the motion include a survey of community members to determine their interest in the routes that are being proposed. Vice Mayor Mai, I hope I accurately characterized your motion. I think I got the gist of it.
Good enough.
Okay. And for whatever it's worth, I think that could be well-integrated into action item number two, which is the assessment of those additional routes.
All right. That friendly amendment offered, accepted by me and the secondor of the motion. All right, that's incorporated into the main motion. Anything further? Let's see, Councilmember Carol, then Councilmember Lou. And I think we'll hopefully move toward a vote. Councilmember Carol.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to just point a clarification. So the friendly amendment was a survey to see if residents would ride buses? Or the survey was a friendly amendment to see if residents would ride the routes? Just want to understand what I could be voting on here.
I understood it to be a survey to determine community interest in the routes that are being proposed. But it is, to be fair, it is Vice Mayor Mai's friendly amendment. So I hopefully got that right.
Point of order. So who? That's me.
What is your point of order?
So can you read that back again one more time, Jeff?
Yeah. I understood your friendly amendment to be that the actions would include a survey of community members to determine their interest in of community members to determine their interest in utilizing the routes that are to be proposed.
Okay, I'm going to change that. Okay, it's the buses themselves. The routes I have no problems with. I mean, that's just, you know, a minor issue. I want to know about the buses themselves. So that's the change I want on there. I hope that clarifies it for you, Councilmember Carroll.
Oh, it definitely does, because I want to, and I apologize, I'm going to be a real stickler. I want to know exactly what I'm voting on and what passes, because I guess I voted on something I didn't realize. I voted on some district, one specific thing that I didn't realize that I had voted on when I thought I was voting on something that was a citywide survey of libraries and community centers. So I want to know exactly what I'm voting on. So can you repeat that back, City Attorney?
Certainly. And before I do, I want to make clear that neither the maker nor the second have agreed to the revised amendment. But the revised amendment is that the motion will include a survey of community members to determine their interest in riding the buses.
Yes. Thanks for the clarification.
As the maker of the motion, let me, let me try to, let me tell you, I'm not interested in what you had described it to be. I think it should be. If there's a survey conducted, I'll tell you my problem here. You do a survey, you know, council's thinking about extending the Irvine-Connect transit system. Would you like to see that happen? And would you ride it? People say yes. They just say, they'll overwhelmingly say yes. If this were conducted, if, as suggested by the City Attorney, if Action Item Two were changed to read, direct that staff assess. Hold on here. Direct that staff conduct and develop a ridership demand survey and a budgetary plan relative to those two new routes. That's information I'd be interested in. If you want just a general survey, I mean, I'm not going to vote against the motion because there's a general survey in it, but I'd just tell you, he's always come back, yeah, people want it, they want it, they want it, but that doesn't mean they'll actually ride it.
I'm standing by my amendment.
Okay, well, let's just hold it there for right now. Since I accepted it as friendly, I won't disavow it right now. Let's hear from others. Councilmember Liu.
Thank you. So Councilmember Carroll, thank you for asking that question to clarify that. I was also trying to understand what we're voting for. I believe we've gone past the point of trying to figure out whether residents want a bus system or not. So I agree with Mayor that maybe a survey to, I mean, truth be told, I think a survey costs extra money than, and, you know, the city staff had already done the study to see where residents are riding the buses or public transit system. So I think it's a duplication of effort in this case, and I would rather not have to spend more money on conducting a survey on something that's already been studied. So may I suggest that we just don't even entertain the idea of a survey?
Thank you for your comment. Let me make a suggestion here or ask a question. What kind of survey work did you do in preparing the initial route that we have now?
As part of the Transit Vision Plan, there weren't methodologically significant survey work that was conducted. We assessed the different traffic patterns. We assessed options and areas to connect in order to come up with the route system that's articulated in the transit plan. And so we haven't done any real survey work whatsoever. Again, to this point, we've been monitoring ridership to determine interest.
So that first route came about mainly because of staff intuition? Or was there, in fact, some data that you used?
No, there was absolutely data. We looked at our ITAM traffic data, working with a consultant to identify highest-used traffic routes and traffic locations in town. We modeled then visitor locations where residents and travelers would go to throughout the city, looking at traffic data and traffic patterns to come up with what routes might make the most sense.
And is that what you did for Action Item Number Two?
Yes. The way that the route structure was suggested, number one, the 60-minute headways we looked at is consistent with what, the costs are a little bit more affordable, but it's consistent with what OCTA runs. They currently run on 60-minute headways. We also started with the Jamboree-UCI route in advance of the Great Park route, primarily because of the connection to the airport, which was identified as a big driver in the preliminary initial Transit Vision Plan that set the groundwork for the overarching Irvine-Connect program.
But do you feel you need to do more survey work?
The data never hurts. I think ultimately, we look to the council if it's important to have an additional piece of input, because we haven't done any survey work to this point. If that's an important piece of information for the council to have, we can certainly go and coordinate that without any problems.
So let me make a suggestion here, because we do try to get out of here by 10 o'clock, okay? If, under that Action Item Two, it says, "Direct that staff assess." Well, if staff were, if that were deemed to include conducting some research survey, that's part of your assessment. As far as I'm concerned, if you think that would be valuable, do it. Does that satisfy your concern, Councilmember Mye?
Well, as long as they do it, because they haven't, they haven't done it. I mean, as long as they are able to do it, yeah. I mean, if it's part of, I mean, is that going to be part of the package here? Or what are we talking about?
Well, if we can just stipulate that the word "assessment" includes conducting whatever surveys staff deems appropriate.
Like I said, they haven't yet, so that's why I wanted it in writing here as well. If we're going to spend millions of dollars, I think we should, and we want to get people out of their cars, let's make sure that they want to get out of their cars, for one. It's not, that's not too much to ask, I don't think.
Well, again, that's why if the word "assess" is deemed to include conducting whatever surveys they deem appropriate, ridership surveys, expected ridership surveys, I think we just need to frankly give this back to staff in a form that allows us to take next steps.
So I take it that my amendment is acceptable then?
Yeah, as long, as long as your amendment is not deemed to just be a general survey of how people feel, I want staff to conduct whatever surveys, whatever research they need to. And if that's what your motion, if that's what your amendment is, I'm happy to accept it.
Great. And I want to add one more thing. It's not going to change anything, but I want to also do an analysis on why iConnect failed. We knew it was a, not iConnect, but iShuttle. We know it was a failure, so I'd like to understand a little bit why that was a failure as well in here.
Very well. You, I just have to object to the characterization. We ran that system, and it was actually quite effective. It was serving principally the business community with commuters. I do not call it a failure. I call it a shuttle system that was actually somewhat successful and was really tremendously damaged by COVID. And let me just add one other thing. And then I think it was Mayor Khan who really pushed the idea of, well, let's get something in place where residents can use it as opposed to commuters. And it worked. It worked.
Point of order. I retract my statement there. It was a system that didn't work properly due to unforeseen circumstances.
Okay. My feelings are not hurt. Okay, thank you. All right. There's a motion before us. Councilmember Carroll, Councilmember Treceder. Councilmember Carroll.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, you know, having kind of gone through this, and I'm wondering maybe if this is a potential solve, because I think that of these five actions, I do agree with you, Mayor, I think that taken together, a no vote is probably draconian. So I would simply make a substitute motion that we decouple all five and that we vote on each one separately. I think if we do this, we have the opportunity to, instead of give the transit advocates everything they want, to maybe express our wishes as council members with respect to the fact that we like the Connect system and its current, for example, one. And example three, I don't have to vote for expanding 25 new stations and 100-something million dollars' worth of funding on a system I'm not sure I want, when we seem to be having a lot of trouble over a very simple survey that was, which I still need clarification on with all due respect to my colleagues, that should say the following: If you drive cars, will you get out of cars and get on buses? Because that's what we need to know, because like it or not, to the few people that spoke that are very strong transit advocates, and I don't, I can't wait to partner with them on the transit-oriented development that I am more than, more than pumped and excited about doing around our train station. I can't wait to join forces with them on that and to connect that train station with our park and everything else. This thing, I think, is a bridge too far. Again, just for me, so I'd make a substitute motion. Let's decouple all five and vote on them separately. If I could get a second on that, I'd appreciate it.
A second.
If there were two action items, it would be bifurcating it. I don't know what it is when it's five, bifurcating it. Okay.
I was thinking.
I'll make them one at a time. Let's decouple one. I'm kidding, Mayor, but I.
No, very well. Just, it doesn't have to be a substitute motion. I'll turn to our City Attorney. How, all right. Let's, let's go ahead with your motion to, it's not a substitute motion, really. It's just a substitute, it's a different procedure, really.
Mayor, at this point, the substitute motion was to take separate votes on all five. So if it passes, it won't be a vote on any one of the five. Then you'd have to go forward and take a vote on each of the five. And that substitute motion would kill the main motion, so you'd be in that position.
Why don't I just suggest, right now, that we vote on each of these action items separately and forget it being a substitute motion and all that business?
Yeah. Given that's your prerogative as the maker of the main motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
I think that's the easiest way of doing it.
Are we going to couple the survey into one of the five? Just so we can kind of talk a little bit about the survey one when we get to it?
As far as I'm concerned, I don't have a problem with anybody doing a survey.
Okay, well, we can talk about it as we go. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
I would put it into the second one if you're doing that. All right. Councilmember Treceder, go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I guess I'm fine with however we want to go through the votes. Just want to make sure that I clarify, these are for 20-minute intervals, correct, that we're going to be talking about?
The current plan related to the expansion that cost about $3.5 million a year more included 20-minute headways for the expanded Yale-Baranca route and 60-minute headways for the Baranca-Link and the Jamboree-UCI route. In order to shift all, I don't think that changes the direction in the recommended actions the council will be voting on, but to shift everything to 20-minute headways would increase the costs to, from three up to six or seven million dollars a year on an annual basis moving ahead. We would assess all of that as, based on the council's vote on the items coming forward, bring those options back to the council for you to consider how you would want to move forward after it's fully assessed.
Let me, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead. I was, I was just going to say that, well, go ahead. I think our.
Yeah, I probably will say the same thing. But what if we just have the 20-minute headways for the Jamboree-UCI route map and not have it for the link, the Baranca-Link route map?
We, that would be definitely part of our assessment. When we've looked at the 20-minute headways for just the Jamboree-UCI link, the base cost for that route at 20 minutes would be about $4.7 million a year on average.
Okay. All right, yes, if you would be willing to include that sort of analysis in.
We would analyze all of it for council consideration based on the council's upcoming vote.
And that would be part of Action Two?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Thank you.
I think Councilmember Treceder is going in the same direction I was going to with you. When we give you direction to develop a budgetary plan to facilitate the two, as far as I'm concerned, you can give us budget alternatives. If you do it on a 20-minute headway, it's going to cost this one. If you do a 60-minute headway, it's going to be this. You bring that back to us.
Correct. That's what we do.
I don't think we can design and execute the system precisely tonight. We want to give you ample authority to bring back to us. All right. So I guess we'll take these now without any further requests to be heard. We'll take these one at a time. Just to keep things moving, I move adoption of Action Item One.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Action Item One, moved by me, seconded by Councilmember Treceder. We do have to allow for comment on each of these, of course. Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Assuming that we're rolling the survey into this one, can we just, can we read back the survey language? So we just, sorry, I would just really have to have it all down exactly. So I'm, because I want to support this.
I believe the process we're engaging now, we're voting on each of the action items separately. The survey request was the sixth action item.
Oh, okay. I thought we were going to pair it with.
I understand. Jeff, is that correct? There'll be a separate vote.
Actually, I've heard two ideas. It's either a new sixth action item or it is integrated into the second action item. But either way, it's not part of the motion that's before you, which is just the first action item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
This is just to continue the current system? All right. And then expand it north also, okay? No further requests to be heard? I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Liu.
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mye.
Yes.
Mayor Agren.
Yes.
Carry six zero.
All right. I'll move Action Item Two and weave into it expansive authority for the conducting of surveys.
Second.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I put on my rise to, I don't rise here, but I sit here to oppose this item, not because I would be against it after we have a further seasoning. to oppose this item. Not because I would be against it. After we have a further seasoning of the Irvine Connect program, and I want to thank the council and particularly the mayor to decouple these things so we didn't have, I didn't have to give a global no. You've accommodated me and I'm appreciative, and we can all agree to disagree on things. So I do agree that two is premature and that we could, or I could get to two, I'm only one of six here, this fall, or maybe at a time, you know, perhaps uncertain, when we really have a more seasoned Irvine Connect system now that we voted, along with my vote affirmatively, to expand it north to run along Portola Parkway, this, what we call the expanded Yale-Baronka route. I just wanted to be very clear, I, I'm not against this system. I've been on this system. I wonder if the rest of my colleagues up here have actually been on the thing? I have. I took it. No one else was on it, okay? Fact. Doesn't mean that we didn't have that great ridership day. I think that's awesome. I think we have a real potential here. I think that we are going perhaps a little bit too, you know, too fast, too soon. And that's just, that's just my view. I'm not sure if anyone else has that view. I hope that others would. But I would say that I would, just want to give my reasoning why I am reluctant at this point to move forward on the expanded Connect when we don't have the existing Connect really, really within, within good grasp of, of what we need, what we need the system as it currently exists, as will be expanded to do. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Liu.
Just wanted to clarify that, well, two and three to me, well, not two and three, I'm sorry, two and four to me are somewhat related, that the new expanded routes, unless I'm misunderstanding it, will essentially cover pretty much the same route that I shuttle is currently covering. So, I mean, would this vote on item number two affect how we will decide on three, I mean, four?
Yeah.
I'd offer that, certainly, they're interrelated, but they're separate in that the item on number two directs an assessment of what might be possible. Certainly, one of the options to make all of it possible includes shutting down the I shuttle. And so if there's an affirmative vote on two and an affirmative vote on four, it gives us a little bit more clarity and fewer options to assess.
Nobody else has a comment here? Maybe if we just insert it into number two, or maybe we go back to that idea of authorizing staff to do whatever ridership surveys are deemed appropriate before, before the council moving ahead with implementation of anything. Why don't we just do that? So if we left two the way it is now, that'll just be a clean vote, up or down on that. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. With, with the addition of the survey component?
Well, I was thinking of moving that out and just making it at the end. You could just say, you could just say, direct the staff assess and conduct appropriate surveys.
Yep.
Just put the language in there. I know you're going to do these things. So if we can just find the few words to put in there, would you suggest we do that?
I would. And if I could make a suggestion, after the word assess, just put in parentheses, including without limitation, the conduct of appropriate surveys.
Okay.
And then close the parentheses.
Did you get that, Carl? Excellent. All right. So let's, let's vote on action item two, but I'd like Carl to read it to us, please.
So it was action item two was direct the staff assess and develop a budgetary plan to facilitate the addition of two new Irvine Connect routes to include, oh, I'm sorry, actually, we're going to include, including but not, but not limited to, now, I can't read my own writing, I apologize, including but not limited to the conducting of appropriate surveys.
Mayor, if you allow.
Want your words, Smith, it just a little more.
Certainly.
Mr. Melchior.
Action item two would read, direct staff to assess, open parentheses, including without limitation through the conduct of appropriate surveys, close parentheses, and develop a budgetary plan to facilitate the addition of two new Irvine Connect routes to include a Jamburi-UCI route and a Baronka-Link route that would connect to the Yale-Baronka route for implementation in fiscal year 25, 26.
I'm going to venture, before calling on councilmember Carroll, that I think that language satisfies all interests. Does it, councilmember Carroll?
Yeah, respect. I don't think it gets there, just, just because it's, it's, you know, we're delegating, I know staff will do its very best, but I'm sure they'll find the language that won't sit well with me. And if the goal is, if the, if the goal is to gauge, gauge actual resident interest in using a bus service expansion, then the survey should be asking the questions of whether the residents are interested in using a bus service expanded as proposed. So if we can get more clarity around that, you know, I could potentially get there, but.
Well, let me, let me just see if I can help here. When you do a survey, surveys ask all kinds of questions. They start with general questions, then they ask more specific questions, they ask them from different angles. I assume we're doing this survey not just as a cosmetic exercise, but to in fact elicit information that will be helpful to us. I would not suggest that conducting a survey is just zeroing in on these two routes and so forth, general and specific. Does that help you?
It's a, yeah, I mean, it's, I'd like to hear what the other members say, but it's, it's a start, Mayor. Thanks.
All right, councilmember Mai, then councilmember Liu. This is how sausage is made.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to clarify what, what my intent here is. It's, it's transparency and it's fiscal responsibility. I want the survey to let us know, will people of Irvine be comfortable with these numbers in front of them? Will they want this? It's as simple as that. I, the wording that you're proposing is very ambiguous. It's very generic. And it's telling staff, you're going to do all this stuff, you're going to do all this stuff. I just want to know that those items there, will the people support getting in these buses, out of their cars, at this cost? I, I don't want ambiguous language where it can be determined, but it's fully delegated to staff.
What I might propose then is, we have direction to develop the survey that council would like before the survey is finalized and executed. We would reconvene with the council to get your concurrence that we've developed the survey in a manner that's consistent with the council's expectation. Basically, we'll develop the survey, bring it back to council, make sure you're comfortable, everyone is comfortable with what's been put together, and then that will be the survey that we launch.
Thanks.
All right, councilmember Liu, then councilmember Trecider.
Thank you. I want to reiterate that to be fiscally responsible, I, I think, a survey that on something that's already known is a waste of money. And again, if this, these routes, proposed routes are covering what I shuttle routes are covering, then we should have information on ridership already, right?
The, the routes don't replicate I shuttle. We do have I shuttle-related route ridership data. All three of our existing I shuttle rights combined currently have less ridership than our one Irvine Connect route. We have that information.
Yeah, so I appreciate the fact that these routes are being studied right now, not an immediate expansion or implementation. Just to move things forward, I agree with what councilmember Carroll had proposed, that we should just, if we're going to have to do a survey, maybe just do a survey on the routes rather than whether people will take a bus.
Point of order. There was never a survey done. Is that correct?
Correct. We have not done a survey related to Irvine Connect.
There's a motion before us. Councilmember Trecider, I think you may be the last.
Yeah, no, I just want to say that I'm fine either with a survey or, or without. I feel confident that the residents will be supportive of this project. And if they're not, then that's important information to know. So no problem there. I'm just hoping that we can get to voting. Thanks.
All right. Without any further requests to be heard, the motion to adopt action item two with the inclusion of the parenthetical definition of what assess is, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
No.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Liu.
Yes.
Councilmember Trecider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
No.
Mayor Aigren.
Yes.
Carrie's 42 with councilmember Carroll and Vice Mayor Mai voting no.
With the adoption of action item two, I'll move on to three. I'll move the adoption of action item three. If somebody would second that.
Second.
I have a question of staff. Yes, go ahead.
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Trecider. Obviously, when you construct bus stops and everything, those can be done on a deferred basis, on an immediate basis and so forth. This is all with the understanding that, that.
This would be with the.
That'll be in accordance with a schedule that matches the various routes.
Correct. And in accordance with any of the final approved route expansions the council ultimately selects.
I don't want to write that understanding in. We'll be here another 45 minutes on that alone. So there's a motion before us. Councilmember Carroll, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly. So a vote yes on this is a vote for a very large, to go underway with a very large urban bus system. And that is a vote that is a bridge too far, that potentially could change the character of the city. And I would just remind my council members that they are doing it without a survey, without an actual, without an actual taking of the pulse of the 320,000 people that live here, which I think is, is troubling to say the least. So I will be voting no on a massive expansion of a bus system in our city, when we have existing OCTA buses, we have an existing sort of pilot, sort of somewhat successful Connect system in, in embryo stage that we need to run through its paces. So again, a vote yes on this is a vote for a large urban bus system in our city of Irvine. Make no mistake about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Carroll. Let me just see if we can straighten this out by adding a few words. If we were to direct the establishment of a draft capital improvement project plan that is subject to what routes develop and so forth, you could begin work on the plan without, without us necessarily going through with it at all. You would come back with the plan, right?
That would, that's accurate, yes.
Is just adding the word plan after capital improvement project plan enough, enough to satisfy you, councilmember Carroll? It's a plan. It would have to come back to us. And you say, well, this route looks questionable. We'll say, well, we certainly don't want to be cutting up concrete and establishing bus stops if we don't know we're going to go ahead with it.
And perhaps in addition to adding the word plan, we add one more clause at the end of that sentence, subject to city council selection of the final expanded Irvine Connect routes.
I think that's perfect.
So then the motion would read, direct the establishment of a capital improvement project plan for the construction of additional Irvine Connect bus stops and execute a contract with the bus operator for expanded and new routes, subject to future city council approval of the final expanded Irvine Connect routes.
I think that motion works. I noticed in your reading of it, you appropriately deleted the word and. I think you did, deleted the word additional. You just left the word additional. And you deleted the, the number 25, correct?
Correct.
Good. I think that means nothing's going to happen that's objectionable to you without your scene.
No, I, Mayor, I appreciate it. This is not a disagreement, certainly personally. I think it's more, you know, it feels like the, feels like the OCPA agreed, agreement to withdraw without withdrawing, and then we withdraw, but we didn't withdraw. I, I just want to be clear. I'm not for this, and I appreciate your respect that we're on different sides of this. I'm just not for it at this time, which doesn't mean I'm not for it at a later time. I, I do appreciate, though. I do believe this is a vote for a, a large urban bus system. And I would rather not be in a position of voting yes, just to vote no later, absent the, absent the information that, that I'd like to have. But I, Mayor, I do appreciate it. Thank you, City Mayor.
Okay, sure. No other requests to be heard. Let's have the motion as, as improved, read.
Direct the establishment of a capital improvement project plan for the construction of additional Irvine Connect bus stops and consideration of execution of the contract with the bus operator for expanded and new routes, subject to city council approval of the final Irvine Connect expanded route systems.
That's the motion before us. Was there a second, councilmember Trecider? Are you good with that?
Yeah, I, I will accept that, just to keep things going. Thank you.
All right. The motion is properly before us. No further requests to be heard. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Liu.
Yes.
Councilmember Trecider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
No.
Mayor Aigren.
Yes.
Carrie's 42 with councilmember Carroll and Vice Mayor Mai voting no.
All right. Number four is discontinuance of the three I shuttle routes. I'll move adoption of that.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Let me just suggest implicit in the motion, those people who are using the system now, who are commuters coming in and so forth, and commuters going out for that matter, let's please try to provide ample notice to these folks that the routes are being discontinued.
Certainly. And what's important to note, too, the Irvine Connect routes in large part replicate the I shuttle routes in terms of where the connection goes in the spectrum area. And as we assess expansion, we'll look at how connection in the IVC would work.
And you'll educate the riders accordingly. Very well. I see no requests by my colleagues to be heard on the motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Liu.
Yes.
Councilmember Trecider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
Mayor Aigren.
Yes.
Carrie 60.
Very well. Action item five, I'll move action item five, which is direct that over the course of the next year, staff assess the viability of instituting a fourth Irvine Connect route to link the Great Park area with the proposed expanded Irvine Connect system, including the viability of bonding against. including the viability of bonding against the city's existing 116 transit funding source.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Let me just say that, again, this is staff assessment. Doesn't mean we're doing it. Means they're assessing it. Assessing the viability, and you'll be coming back to us, obviously with more information, correct?
Exactly.
All right. Councilmember Goh?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to see if we can accelerate, you know, this route in District Two, maybe in a shorter format. Like I said, the feedback is if you can just take some of the high-density neighborhoods, like Woodbury, some parts of the Great Park, to route into the train station and perhaps transfer to the current route, or even have one, you know, or a few go directly to the Spectrum so that we don't have the issue with the headways. Even if we have to do a sixty-minute headway, I think that that would be a good start. That would be a good use case scenario. And if you do, I'm not suggesting we do a survey, but just speaking on behalf of me and my neighbors, that's a really welcome route. I'd love to be able to take public transportation to Spectrum. As you guys know, parking there is horrendous. And, you know, as far as people going to, perhaps drinking, you know, avoid DUIs, that would help a lot as well. So if we can consider that request, that would be greatly appreciated.
Let me, let me suggest that the motion, if it were changed to say over, direct that over the course of the next year, staff assess, why don't we say over the course of the next six months? That would accelerate the whole process.
And we certainly can, and I interpret that motion is looking at how the route design might work, that perhaps this larger route could be modified as part of our review to link certain neighborhoods and get something executed a little bit more quickly. We'd certainly assess and analyze that.
I think, Councilmember Goh, that would kind of accelerate things a bit and push forward this project. Does that, are you comfortable with that change?
Yeah, I think economically, that's a big advantage. I'm seeing this yellow route right now that you guys have, if we didn't have to traverse through the north part of the city, which it can be, you can get to by transferring. Obviously, nobody wants to transfer and ride the bus for two, three hours. But again, the use case scenario, like I said, would be to the Irvine Station and to the Spectrum. So, thank you, Mayor. That helps a lot.
All right. Are we clear? The motion is properly before us. No requests for further council comment. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carol?
No.
Councilmember Goh?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Treseder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
No.
Mayor Aigren?
Yes.
Carries forty-two with Councilmember Carol and Vice Mayor Mai voting no.
All right. We've concluded our business. Three point four, that was easy. Item three point, three point five. Would the clerk please identify this item by subject and title?
Consideration of an ordinance amending the names of the Community Services Department, Director and Commission in the Irvine Municipal Code, and authorization for the city manager to negotiate and execute memorandum of understanding with Friends of the Library related to the Irvine Public Library System, both in connection with the establishment of the Irvine Public Library System.
All right. Those people who are out there who wish to participate electronically in this matter can do so now by raising their hand and entering the queue by way of Zoom. Do we have any requests, Mr. City Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No requests, all right. Well, then, why don't, why don't I just put the matter before us? Well, I'll tell you what. We'll have, we'll have staff make a presentation first. Then we'll, we'll see if it's encountering any resistance. If it is, I think we'll want to continue this matter. All right? But you go right ahead. Please introduce yourselves, our new librarian, and of course, our Community Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor Aigren. Good evening, city council members. Chris Lama, Director of Community Services. And here with me is Julie Zioli, Deputy Director and City Librarian. Really excited to talk to you tonight about further steps in establishing the city's public library system, specifically consideration of department name change, Friends of the Library MOUs, and a library foundation. So just a bit of background on what's been going on as of late, before we get into the actual action items. So at the July twenty-third, 2024 meeting, city council approved an agreement with the county to transition library services from county to city operated. The agreement was then approved by the Orange County Board of Supervisors in August of 2024. Per the agreements with the county, the Heritage and University Park libraries are set to be temporarily closed beginning May sixteenth. And then the Katie Wheeler Library Branch will be scheduled to be temporarily closed beginning July one of this year. So city staff have been working to establish the infrastructure to reopen the libraries as the new Irvine Public Library System. This includes working towards improving collection holdings, recruiting staff, developing technology infrastructure, and scheduling facility updates. Staff have conducted a series of informational meetings over the last several months to inform the community of the transition, as well as listen to the community feedback on the vision of the future for their library system. So additionally, in the interim during the closures, staff has developed a series of programs and services to offer to the community during the transition. This will include a summer reading program to run from June ninth to July thirtieth, stories for children and families, study hall sessions for teens during final exams, and developing a digital library collection of eBooks and e-audiobooks, which is expected to launch during the month of June. The anticipated reopening of Heritage and University Park libraries is scheduled from Monday, August the fourth of this year. And per the lease agreement with the county, we would get, we would get into the building at Katie Wheeler beginning January one of 2026 and hopefully open up shortly after that. So with the establishment of the system, the city is taking the steps to integrate the library services into our municipal structure. To formalize that transition, staff's recommending that city council adopt an ordinance to update the Irvine Municipal Code to reflect the following name changes: the Community Services Department to change to the Community and Library Services Department; the Director of Community Services to the Director of Community and Library Services; and the Community Services Commission to the Community and Library Services Commission. The Community and Library Services Commission will act an advisory role to the council regarding library programs, services, and future facility planning in a similar manner that they currently do for the Community Services Department. Additionally, staff's recommending that council adopt a resolution making the corresponding department renaming updates to the amended and restated bylaws of the Community Services Commission to reflect that name change. And I'm going to turn it to Julie now to talk a little bit about future partnerships.
Thank you, Director Lama. So staff is also recommending the city council direct and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute memorandums of understanding with the Friends of the Library nonprofit organizations for the University Park Library, the Heritage Park Library, and the Katie Wheeler Library, with a long-term goal of merging these three organizations into one unified entity. Although the form of the MOUs have not been finalized, they plan to include partnership provisions similar to current agreements in place. We have been communicating with the current groups regarding the transition of services, including impacts, as well as dialoguing on the MOU process. We know the vital role our friends play in supporting daily operations, including helping to fund programs and collections, as well as working as advocates in the community. Our goal is to maintain a strong level of communication as to continue to build upon positive working relationships. Finally, staff recommends that the city council direct the city manager for future city council consideration a proposed framework to establish a nonprofit library foundation dedicating to securing private donations, grants, and corporate sponsorships for the Irvine Public Library System. Unlike the Friends of the Library organizations, which primarily focus on daily operational funding, such as programs and collection support, the foundation would provide long-term capital investments, including facility expansions, renovations, and technology enhancements. The foundation would work in partnership with city leadership and community stakeholders to ensure that Irvine's libraries remain financially sustainable and continue to serve as dynamic hubs for education, culture, and community engagement. Staff anticipates returning to city council with a recommended library foundation framework in December of 2025, and if approved, would facilitate the establishment of such a foundation in early 2026. Together, these components reflect the city's commitment to establishing a well-rounded governance and support structure that strengthens public engagement, enhances transparency, and ensures a robust, community-focused library system that will serve the evolving needs of Irvine residents for years to come. So again, just to recap, the recommended actions are in front of you tonight and are as reflected in the staff report. We are happy to answer any questions at this time.
Very well. Thank you for, for that staff presentation. Thanks, by the way, for all the hard work and the great work you've been doing as we prepare for this momentous transition. I think the community is very excited about it. Do my council colleagues have any questions or comments to direct the staff at this point? The energy level goes down as the hour extends. All right. Let me then just, I guess I'm looking at the, the action items here. We've got a resolution, but we've got an ordinance as well. Why don't I just put all these in play right now? Would that be advisable, Mr. Melchior?
We typically take the ordinance by a separate motion, but the other four can go by one motion.
All right. Let me, do you prefer, do you have any particular order you prefer? Would you?
Nope. At the end of the day, they'll all come out the same.
I'll move action item one, which is the introduction by virtue of this first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Irvine, California, amending the City of Irvine Municipal Code to reflect necessary name changes to the Community Services Commission, Department, and Director in connection with the establishment of the City of Irvine Public Library System.
Second.
Motion and a second. I'm happy to open it up for comments here, including a public comment. But let me just clarify something. So what will the new commissioners be called? I remember reading it in the report. It's really long now. They're going to be called what?
Community and Library Services Commissioners.
Community and Library Services Commissioners. Calsec. Okay. All right. That's the only part of this that gave me a little indigestion. Any comments on the, on the motion? There being none, any, no, no public comments?
No requests to speak?
All right. We'll move, we'll move to a vote then.
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Councilmember Goh?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Treseder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
Yes.
Mayor Aigren?
Yes.
Carries six-zero.
And I'll move the adoption of items two, three, and four, two being a resolution, and three and four. Do you want to describe three and four?
Sure. What three does is directs the city manager to negotiate with staff to execute memorandum of understandings with the Friends of the Library groups at each of the three locations. Essentially, that would be pretty similar to what they have now with the county, but we would put it into an MOU format rather than a license agreement.
And two, three, and four taken together really set up the undergirdings of all of this. And implicitly, I want to be clear about this, but I know you're going to be doing it anyway, our wonderful Friends of the Library volunteers. These are people who have such, not only dedication, but insight regarding library services and insights regarding the transition from the county, which has been difficult to our own system. I hope you will, perhaps with the adoption of action item two, the resolution, be appointing some kind of advisory committee, call upon these people. I hope the commissions will be doing that. Does that make sense to you?
Sure. We can certainly have that conversation with the commissions when the, when the time comes. Absolutely.
All right. I think it'd be a terrible mistake to lose the value of what all those volunteers have, have to offer, just in terms of insights and the whole transition process.
Certainly. We're meeting with them on a very regular basis. And as Julie mentioned, just appreciate their efforts and insight.
Okay. Well, with that understanding, then, are there any comments on action items two, three, and four? No counsel, oh, Councilmember Liu?
Thank you. So just a quick comment in support of this. I had the pleasure of meeting the folks who are in the three different Friends of Libraries. And I agree with what Mayor had said. These are invaluable volunteers. And hopefully, we'll be able to use their knowledge in a more systematic way. So I guess it was also a question, so are we, since we're going to bring them all under one umbrella organization, is there like a possibility for them to have a more, a more official way? For like a better way to describe it, to get their input to community services?
We can absolutely have those conversations. And thank you for that question, too, Councilmember Liu. Because I did want to clarify that the intention is, within the next twelve months, to do exactly that, is to merge those into one overarching Friends of the Library. And we've talked to all of them about that, and we've, we've gotten support. But absolutely, we can have those conversations.
That would be lovely. Thank you.
Excellent. Anything further? Nothing further. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Before I do, Mayor, and I apologize if I missed it. I know you made the motion, but I don't recall getting a second.
Oh, second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Thank you. Councilmember Carol seconded the motion. It's now properly before us. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Councilmember Goh?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Treseder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
Yes.
Mayor Aigren?
Yes.
Carries six-zero.
All right. Item three point six has been removed from the agenda. I'm going to suggest, I'm going to do my colleagues a favor and just put this over to May thirteenth. There's no, there's no immediacy on this. Is there, is there, Mr. Chief?
No, there's not.
We've got our agreement with our employees in place. This, well, I'll obviously put it into an ordinance form and provide for the future and include, it would also include the contract employees for major contractors here. But I don't, I don't think we want to get into the particulars tonight. So I'll tell you what. I'll just move to continue the item to May thirteenth. But I'd like it to be early on the agenda. But I'd like it to be early on the agenda.
Certainly.
For council business. Is there a second, the motion to continue?
Oh, second, Mayor.
Seconded by, I thought I heard Councilmember Carroll first. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mayor, before I do, I just want to mention, we do have one person who requested to speak that's here tonight.
On that item?
Correct.
Oh, my goodness.
It was Mr. Meyerson. He said he'd wait that.
All right. Mr. Meyerson will agree to hold off his comments till next time.
There's also one member who just popped into Zoom, so I'll defer. There's one request that just popped into Zoom, so I'll defer to you on that one.
Same thing. We'll just have to have that person wait till it's on the agenda the next time.
Thank you.
So they can get off the line between now and then. Okay. Motion to continue is before us. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Liu.
Yes.
Councilmember Tresider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
Mayor Agram.
Yes.
Carries six-zero.
All right. That concludes our business for tonight. Having completed our business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Vice Mayor Mai.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Tresider. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Unanimously adjourned.